This for as preliminary matter, my name is Pete Pecos. I'm the vice chair for the Newberry Planning Board. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipate agenda are present. You can hear me. Any board members, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. George Morse?
Yes.
Thank you, George. Leslie Matthews?
Yes.
Thank you, Leslie. Woody Knight?
President.
Thank you, Woody. And Mary Stone?
Yes.
Town staff, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Martha Taylor, planning director?
Yes.
Thank you. Kristen Grubbs, assistant town planner?
Yes.
Okay, let's see if I have this correct. Anticipated speakers present is on the agenda. Please respond to the affirmative. Michael McNiff?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Bob Griffin?
Also here. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Tom Woodruff?
Yes, here.
Thank you, Tom. Wendy Reed?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you, Mark Rudow.
Mark Bowdre is here, yes.
Thank you, Mark Bowdre. Tom Z?
Present.
Great. Sam Colum- Columbo? Columbo? I'm, I apologize. For Millennium Engineering?
He's here. He's muted.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. I think it's Sam. Hope I didn't butcher it too bad. Michael Shea?
Yes, present.
Great. And Chris Coughlin?
Here, thank you.
Great. We did start our meeting a little bit delayed. This was to allow for people who made, might have anticipated that the meeting would be held in person. Allow them the ability and time to connect to our remote meeting. All right. Good evening. This is April 19th, 2023. Open meeting of the Newberry Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023, which extends the governor's March 19th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law 3820 until March 31st, 2025. This order suspends the requirements of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely. So as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newberry Planning Board is convened by video conference via Zoom as posted on the planning board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website, in which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http://zoom.us and entering meeting ID number 83271413056 or by calling 9292056099 and entering the meeting ID number when prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that the attendees are participating by video and or telephone conference. The meeting is also being broadcast live through local access cable channel nine on Zoom and at www.tcnTV.org. And the recording will be available on the Newberry Access YouTube channel. Meeting materials will be provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak, and if necessary, share information to the screen. Please state your intention after you have been called. You go into the first item on the agenda, permit me to come to cover some ground rules for a clear and effective conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. The chair will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, we will go down the list of board members, invite each by name, provide any common questions or motion. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees except board members and staff members, please remember to mute your computer with the mute button or on your phone with star six to toggle to mute and unmute when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds and ear, on your phones and with tablets or cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you, and you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any responses, please wait until the floor is yielded to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussions with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. With regards to public comment, there'll be an opportunity for public comment and questions during public hearings. After members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and or ask questions as follows. We will seek questions and comments through the Zoom raise hand function. For video conference participants to raise your hand, hover over the bottom of the Zoom window below the photo gallery and click on the gray hand that appears. Please ensure that your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by going to the more functions next to your name. For telephone participants to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting, hit star nine on your phone keypad. Questions with comments from members in public who have raised their hands will be done in the order in which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which people click the raise hand function. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address and then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant or participant or his or her representative the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you've been given the floor for your questions. We will then continue down the list of the raised hand column and again afford the participant applicant or representative an opportunity to speak. Shouldn't there be any physical electronic submitted questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record. And again, the participant applicant representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues have not yet been. Each vote taken this evening will be conducted by roll call. All right. Martha, any luck with Larry yet?
He's still trying. I suggested he shut down his computer reboot.
Okay. I'm going to then try to pull up the agenda so that I can have it here. And let's see. So the first thing is going to be the March financial report. I don't have it in front of me. Martha, would you mind reading that?
Let me pull it up. I haven't done that. If you can bear with me for a second.
Absolutely. And folks, we appreciate your, your understanding this evening with our technology chain challenges.
Also, Pete, I understand that the live station isn't coming through either.
Okay, that's unfortunate.
Yeah, Ethan's here, so glitch in the system. All right. So do you want me to put it up on the screen or just read it?
But you can just read it. Thanks so much.
Okay, so this is planning board financial report for March 2023 payroll and invoices authorized. Payroll warrants for planning director and assistant planner, PR 2319, and these, these were signed by the chair. PR 2319 for pay period ending 3/11/23 and PR 2320 for pay period ending 3/25/23. Invoice, the Verizon Wireless invoice for the planning board iPad 3/22/23 and several payments from the escrow accounts for Joe Sowatka. Engineering peer review for three Newbury Port Turnpike on 3/22/23. Engineering peer review for 136 Main Street, 3/20/23. Engineering peer review for the 170 Orchard Street subdivision and common driveway special permit, 3/22/23. And engineering peer review, and these are actually construction inspections for 105 High Road on 3/20/23. And that ends the financial report.
Thank you very much, Martha. Next on our agenda is a discussion regarding remote or in-person meetings. It's kind of ironic that we're going to have this discussion tonight. We were having a technology glitch, which we really haven't had in almost over three years. So I'm not sure if this is a message or we should just kind of work through it. So over the past three years, we have been in a Zoom format, which was something new for the town and new for the planning board. We were able to negotiate the process pretty well, and it's afforded us the opportunity to have our applicants share their information, and then we can all look at the information at the same time, not only board members, but the public as well. I found this to be an extremely helpful tool, and I think we also are able to have more people participate in our evening meetings through the different modes of communication. So we have the opportunity to continue in the Zoom format, and Larry wanted to bring this up for discussion and to see where board members are with that. So I just want to kind of go through board members and ask individually what your preference would be. So George, I'm going to start with you, sir.
My preferences are can you using virtual program?
Okay, thank you. Leslie?
I like the virtual program because we're all in the same format.
Okay, thank you. Woody?
I, I haven't been to too many live meetings because COVID, when COVID hit, we went to Zoom. So my feeling is either way, whether it's virtual or live, it doesn't matter to me. But I would also like to be respectful of my other board members, and if they, they were to prefer virtual for health reasons or other reasons, I respect that. And so I could go either way with how we continue to conduct business.
Beautiful. Thank you so much, Woody. Appreciate. Mary, your thoughts?
I lean very strongly towards any information we have regarding our audience and what their preference is. Do they like the Zoom meetings? Have they had trouble as we have tonight accessing? Do we have more people joining us than we did before? So I don't want to not choose, but I think it's important to find out unless we already know, and I'm being stupid. Or ill informed. I, I really want to know what's best for our audience. What is best for the residents of Newberry? And I agree with Woody. I'm going to go either route, given what the board feels, and that's not a cop out. That's just like, I basically don't have enough information right now, but I really need to know what the audience wants. And if we have any information, that'd be great.
Thank you so much.
It's their show, you know?
Yep.
Not ours.
Thank you. And Larry, I am glad that you're with us, sir. We were just concluding the discussion of Zoom participation versus in-person. And so I can tell you what the tally is as of right now. Leslie and George are in favor of staying with Zoom. Woody is in favor if it's the will of the board, as is Mary, and I've indicated that I am in support of it as well. So I'm asking the devil to use her.
Thank you, and I apologize for whatever was going on here, whatever gremlins were in my computer, but yeah, I agree. Although, you know, for, for this particular board, I think staying with Zoom meeting is probably the best way that we can disseminate information to the, to the public as a whole and, and share information at the meeting. So I guess it's unanimous then that we'll stay in Zoom.
Yes.
That, that affair. Okay, what else did I miss?
Shall we make a motion on that, Larry?
I don't know that it's necessary, but what do you think, Martha?
I, I think either way, I don't think it's necessary either. But certainly could be if you'd like.
All right, well.
The public.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead, Leslie, if you want to make that motion?
I'd like to make motion to stay in Zoom until everybody feels comfortable to get back to a live situation.
Okay, is there a second?
Sort of.
So I'm sorry, I didn't hear. I heard a second. I'm not sure who it was.
Sorry.
Okay.
It was George.
George, thank you, George. Then any, I'll assume there's no further discussion than by roll call vote. Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes. George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So we'll stay in Zoom at least for the foreseeable future. Has the, I'm sorry, I'm just getting organized up here. Has the March financial statement been read into the record?
Yes, I, I did that on your behalf.
Okay, thank you, Martha. All right. And it, I don't know, I, we were anticipating a slight delay in opening the public hearings because this meeting had originally been scheduled for in, in person. That was to give people an opportunity to log in who are to come on to the Zoom meeting. I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get my thoughts together here. Anyway, it's 7:24, so I think enough time has passed and we can go into the public hearings. So the first public hearing, it's actually a combined public hearing on the agenda for 170 Orchard Street map, R20 lot 43A, the owner applicant, the estate of Louis Vulgaris, care of Diane Yurkovich, and we have the definitive subdivision plan application for Fields Way, 170 Orchard Street, and the common driveway special permit application for common driveway serving two lots on the proposed Fields Way subdivision, 170 Orchard Street. And I understand we have revised plans and a letter from Griffin Engineering responding to this. I'm sorry. Anyway, is the applicant here and prepared to give us an update?
Yeah, this is Bob Griffin, and to my left is Mike McNiff, the applicant. If I share my screen, I can show you these changes. They really was, they're really pretty minor. One was moving the lot line of lot three, 15 feet further away from Pearson Drive. There was a comment made that there was some concern that in installing the, the septic line in that location, we might remove some existing vegetation, and I think by moving the lot line 15 feet, we've avoided that issue. And the second change was to reduce the number of hydrants from three new hydrants to two new hydrants. There was some additional discussions with the fire chief, and I think we're back to where we started originally with the fire hydrants. But we've got one fire hydrant in front of lots one and two, and another hydrant in front of lots three and four.
Okay. Anything further?
That was it for the planned changes.
Okay, and all right, let me turn to the board members then to see if there are any, any questions. Pete, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I apologize. So there, from my, my recollection, there were a couple of things that were still kind of standing. And I'm not sure if it's helpful to kind of discuss those. Are there some drainage concerns that we had spoken at our last meeting? There was also some grading on house elevations with respect to the water table. There was the concern of the septic system on lot four, four being a lot two. There was some concern raised with regards to the site line on Orchard Street. There's also some turning radius, subdivision road. There was the location of utility pole at the intersection of what the Orchard and Fields Way. There was also the addition of a driveway for 168 Fields Way, which there's going to be an easement. And I don't think we have any documents regarding the easements, or for that matter, documents regarding the HOA. And then last night, conservation was brought up that there was going to be interest in maintaining this in agricultural use. So I'm looking for an instrument or direction as to how we would facilitate that if this property is going to stay in 61A, how we're going to do that. Because my understanding is planted, the site will be planted this year in the season. So I have a number of things in our previous conversation that I just wanted to refresh the board members so that we could think about those things.
Okay, thank you, Pete. George?
No comments other than I had mentioned about lighting at the entrance. It doesn't have to be in high intensity, but just to let people know where it is. There are considerations of neighbors across the street. So those considerations and the neighbors have to be protected, but it could be even a shield and light on top of a post. I don't care. But it's just something that your neighbors or people coming to visit them have an idea of where they are. That's all I had.
Thank you, George. Leslie, do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I was just curious to Pete's comment on it remaining agricultural. How would that work?
Yeah, we'll give, I, I don't have that answer for you, but we'll give the applicant an opportunity to respond to that. Woody, do you have anything?
Pete, Pete hit a lot of the issues that are going on at the moment. The pole, the pole's a big thing out at the end of the driveway, the line of sight and the septic system on lot, lot two, when lot four appears to have a large, large acreage with it. And I find it hard to believe that they can't find a septic area on their own lot.
All right, thank you, Woody. Mary, do you have anything to add?
I don't have any questions or comments. Larry, you?
No, I, I think Pete was pretty comprehensive, you know, in, in laying out the, the unresolved issues as I understand them. But Bob Griffin, why don't you go ahead if you'd like to respond to any of that?
Here, I'll bring my, I'm gonna try to bring the plans up just because I think they might be helpful as we're talking here. First, you know, I, I think in regards to the drainage, you know, Mr. Sowatka's had the opportunity to review our drainage report, and he took no exception to our drainage design. I did point out at the meeting, or at our last meeting, I'm gonna bring that portion over here, that when we get to the entrance at Orchard Street, the elevations here are too low to get all of the water from the new roadway up into the drainage system. It's just that this is just at a higher elevation, and the stormwater management regulations from DDP allow for this. They call their, you know, small areas like this de minimis areas. And so they understand that there's going to be situations where cer- certain amounts of projects are going to be unable to be captured into the overall stormwater management system, and that's really what we're doing here. So we have, you know, this entrance here, this, you know, first 50 feet, say, is going to continue to drain down to Orchard Street, just like it does today. We're going to be capturing more water in our drainage system as a result of adding catch basins here on the entrance way. And we've got some infiltration structures here, and we're bringing as much water back into our new stormwater treatment wetland area here as we can. This is all, you know, consistent with the stormwater management guidelines. We're not looking for any waivers or, you know, special consideration or anything like that. In regards to the 168 Orchard Street driveway, you can see that, you know, we're, right now, his driveway occupies some of our land. He encroaches onto our land. There's been some discussions with the property owner. We're just going to move the driveway over onto the right of way. I'm not sure that we necessarily need an easement for this. I think if he butts the right of way, he probably has rights in it. But, you know, we're happy to give the guy an easement if, if that's, if that makes the planning board feel better. And it, like I said, you know, clearly, you know, he's no longer going to have access from this portion of his lot onto Orchard Street. His way out is going to be through the new way, and this is a private way. So this way is maintained by the homeowners association that will be made up of lots one through four. There was a question about the, the light pole at the entrance. And, you know, the light pole, we think we can leave it exactly where it is. It's right sort of here, and we're going to work around that. We've positioned the road in such a way that we don't need to move the light pole. So we've, you know, it's got overhead wires coming to it. It'll continue to have overhead wires going to it to the extent that we need to protect it during construction. It's, we'll do that. But I don't see any real deep excavation happening in this area next to the pole, but we'll support that if necessary during construction. In regards to the site distance, I did provide some numbers at our last meeting about, you know, if you, if you look at the site distance available from the intersection here in both directions, I think there were four or 500 feet of site distance where 230 to 250 feet is required. So we had much more site distance required in both directions than is required for the design speed of, of the roadway.
Can I interrupt you one sec? Well, when you say it's required, what are you referring to?
There are some ASHTO standards on site distance, American Association of State Highway Transportation Officials. So they're, and they're the ones that published the guidelines for site distance. And I think we had also had some communication from the police department as well that they thought that the entrance was acceptable the way it was designed. So and, and obviously, Mr. Sowatka didn't take any exception to the, to the site distance issues either. In regards to the septic system on lot four, so here's, here's the house on lot four, and lot four's property line comes back over here. And this is where we have good soils, and all these test pits are, you know, we spent a lot of time obviously trying to find good soils so that we didn't have to configure it a lot like this. But the septic system, the forest main, it's, it's all on lot four's property. We're not crossing anybody's property to put any components of this system in. If you're in lot two, you know, Mr. McNiff has suggested that he would provide a landscaping easement so that lot two's backyard, they can see the grass in this particular area. I don't necessarily think that he's required to do that, and I don't think that the landscaping easement like that requires planning board approval in any event. But, you know, he can do that and make lot two a little bit more pleasant. It doesn't affect either lot four or lot two's ability to get onto their septic system if he does that. And we're just doing it because this is where, this is the portion of the site that has the suitable soils for the, for the septic systems. We didn't leave the door open to do some more septic system testing. You know, we've, we've obviously got a lot of test pits in this area. We could dig more. Maybe we'll, you know, maybe we'll get lucky, but we spent a lot of time doing, digging test pits and trying to find the good sand soils that happen to be at this end of the site. So that's sort of the situation we're in. All the lots conform to zoning. We're not requesting any, you know, there's all, they all have adequate frontage. They all have adequate lot area. So I don't know that we're, we're really looking for any relief related to the lot lines or the shape of the lots or anything like that. The turning radius at the entrance, one of our previous submittals included some truck turning diagrams showing that we had adequate turning for, you know, fire trucks and large vehicles in and out of the property. I don't think there's any concern about turning radius has been mentioned by Mr. Sowatka either. Let's see. Homeowners Association. For some reason, I thought we had provided a draft homeowners association document. Martha, does that ring a bell with you at all?
There was a maintenance document, kind of a draft maintenance document, but that doesn't really constitute everything that's needed, either for the homeowners association or the common driveway.
Right, so it, this will certainly be a private way. If, if the planning board wants to see the homeowners association, you know, documents, you know, Mr. McNiff's lawyers can certainly provide those to the, to the planning board. He's providing, you know, he's, he's in the business of preparing subdivisions for with, that are on private ways. And so he has similar documents from similar projects that he can provide you that, you know, show how the association is formed and basically how the costs are shared. And basically, it's, you know, an equal sharing of the costs of maintenance. And that includes, you know, plowing, utilities, stormwater inspections, you know, whatever's required in the private right of way is shared equally amongst the four property owners. And in regards to the agricultural use, I'm going to go back a little bit here on the drawings. The, there's an existing agricultural field here and here and sort of northwest on lot four. And it turns out that all of this existing agricultural field that is to the west of the common driveway is on land that is owned by lot four. So lot four, in, you know, in theory, we could divide up a portion of lot four to include a portion that has an agricultural restriction remaining on it. We did anticipate taking the property out of 61A after the permitting process, the conservation and the planning board process was done, and Mr. McNiff purchases the property, that would be the time to, to, you know, for that 61A conveyance to occur. But it seems like we could also create a line that sort of, you know, coincides with the location of the common driveway and perhaps this match line area here, and that would leave about eight acres of, of current, of current agricultural land to remain in agricultural use, and it would still allow the four houses to be built as shown here. So that's, that's one way of maintaining the 61A restriction on, on, on those eight acres. Actually, it might be, it might be more than eight acres because when I say eight acres, that's the agricultural land. There's some land further to the northwest that's woods that I think is currently under the 61A restriction also. And we probably would just put all the woods in with the agricultural land. But as a, as a practical matter, it'd be eight acres of agricultural activity. And let's see, I think that was most of the questions. Oh, the light post, we'd be happy. And let's see, I think that was most of the questions. Oh, the light post, we'd be happy to add a light fixture at this last light post or a post, you know, near that intersection. Depending on what we can work out with the electric company, they might want us to have a private, a separate light post and light fixture. And we can certainly do it in a manner so that the light casts downward, not into neighbors' houses or anything like that. And if I forgot something, please remind me.
Any, anything else? Many of the board members at this point?
Yes, I have a question.
Go ahead, listen.
What is, describe the difference between agricultural and agricultural activity? And who who maintains or who stays in ownership of the agricultural part of the land?
So right now, you know, the twenty and one-half acres is divided up with our four lots. And we'd have lots one, two, three, and basically four gets to the remainder of all the land. So the lot size of Lot Four, if I remember correctly, is sixteen or sixteen and a half acres, something like that. The agricultural restriction would probably be roughly half of, of Lot Four. And there would be no agricultural restriction on Lot One, Two, or Three, or on the fields way, private way.
So when you refer to agricultural non-restriction, that would be giving the the homeowner, the, the landowner, the opportunity to use the land in any which way they wanted to?
I don't know about that. I think, I think a sixty-one A restriction re- you know, restricts that activity or restricts that land to agricultural uses. I, I suppose Lot Four, you know, the landowner might say, I, I'd like to use this any way I want. Therefore, I'm not going to put half of my land into an agricultural restriction. They might want to just leave it, you know, unrestricted. But they would have the opportunity to, again, take half of their sixteen acres, put an agricultural restriction on it, and then continue to use that, that eight acres for agricultural, you know, corn and hay is what has been, what is, what it has been used for in the last two years.
So if they don't put in agricultural restriction, that means that they can maintain it as a residential type of atmosphere?
Yes. I mean, they would, they would still have to comply with the wetland regulations. You can see that the BVW actually comes into the agricultural fields. They would be constrained, you know, basically they would have to reseed this barren land and then let it grow up. They would, you know, not be able to plow it or till it or do things like that, because they would be no longer undertaking the agricultural activity. The, the plowing and the tillage of the land is exempt from the Wetlands Protection Act because of its, there's an agricultural exemption in the Wetlands Protection Act that allows the current activity to occur and to continue. But if they choose not to continue it, then they have to leave that land alone.
So it remains in a natural state?
Right. It would, you know, it would be subject to Conservation Commission rules and regulations. If they wanted to do any activity within the wetland or within one hundred feet of the wetlands, they would have to get Conservation Commission permission.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
So if I could, Larry?
Yes, please.
Sure. So at, at our conservation meeting last night, you indicated the intention was to have this larger parcel remain in agricultural. And I was very encouraged by that. And so now I'm looking for the mechanism as to how we can facilitate that. Because one of the, one of the goals of our community, you know, as you know, listed and directed within our master plan is to maintain as much agricultural land as possible. So the discussions taken place, you, you indicated and proposed to the Conservation Commission that that is what you want to do. And the planning board is very welcoming to hear that. So now we're looking at, for the mechanism that will define that, to say that way. So, you know, I think I'm going to turn to Mr. McNiff and ask you, sir, how are you going to guide this with your attorneys to help facilitate this process? Because I, because this is going to help us with our decision-making process, of course.
Thank you. I, I think we can prepare a document that gives it some type of exclusive use on the property. I'm only thinking aloud because I don't know the exact verbiage, but I, I, we can get it out there. We dealt with properties like this in the past. The person who does do the corn out there every year was ecstatic that we're not going to touch it this year. So we said he could go ahead and farm the corn. And when we talked about in future years that he would only have a portion of this farm, he was also excited about that because it was a nice piece of land. In the past, we keep it agricultural with the form, with the corn or the hay, it tends to look great all the time. Whereas when we let it go untouched, it goes pretty wild in some of the places we see and become, becomes almost unkept. You lose all your visitors. But if we can prepare a document to answer your question, that I think will cover the bases in exclusive use.
And I, I think we could establish a line with meets and bounds on it. You know, it would be just to the west of the common driveway. And we can, you know, we can mark these locations in, in the field with bounds or fence posts or something like that. So that, you know, you can come back a year from now or five years from now and, you know, be assured that the land that is truly in agricultural use is continuing to be used for agricultural, you know, uses.
Well, let me ask you this question then. Would there be consideration to altering what you've presented to us thus far with regards to Lot Four and then turning the, that, this other parcel over to another steward, to a land steward?
Well, let's, one thing at a time. What, what sort of alterations do you have in mind for Lot Four?
Well, if you're talking about there's going to be, there's sixteen acres and eight, eight of them would be continuing agricultural use, would you be willing to turn that, that over to a land steward to make, that would be responsible for maintaining that? And for that matter, you could do the other eight, the other eight acres, you know, make it sixteen or whatever you need so that you have a comfortable lot. And then we would be basically designing some land that would have its functional status maintained while you would be able to potentially explore this project as you presented it.
I, I see. So I, I just, I wasn't sure what you meant by it. But it, it sounds like you just really want Lot Four, instead of being sixteen acres, it ends up being eight acres and eight acres is Lot Five or something like that, with the agricultural activity occurring on this new lot.
Right. And quite honestly, if it's turned over to a land steward, the steward could, could maintain the forested act, the forested component as it is, and the agricultural component as it is. So it would, it would take a little bit of legwork. But I know that there would probably be some interest in some of the land trust entities within our community.
Like us in green belts.
That's one possibility, Leslie. Sure.
Yeah. Well, we'll, we'll give us the opportunity, please, to go back and talk to our attorneys just to see what other implications this might have. But it seems consistent with what we were, we were thinking as far as the future uses of the property.
Yeah, you know, it would kind of dovetail what you presented last night to conservation.
As a thought, in an OSRD, don't we usually have to get a steward for the land that we're giving up, whether it's a, the, the green belt or a nonprofit of some type?
Not necessarily. And Martha, correct me if I, if I speak, you know, in, in accurately, it can be a steward. It could be the homeowners association. It depends on how it's designed. This currently is not an OSRD. So I don't know if that model would be ideal to refer to, but I'm encouraged by the avenue and the discussion of, of exploring this.
It'd have to be, go into like a covenant, so it would be protected for a certain period of time to be, remain in an agricultural state rather than continuously growing into a residential facility.
Right. So I, and I think Leslie, and I threw the chair, Larry, I, I think Leslie, yeah. And that's why we have attorneys to work at that stuff, you know. Obviously, this attorneys could, you know, investigate. We need town council to, to look at that and have a conversation, you know, to help with the construction and drafting of that. I think that's something worth exploring. Okay. So let me go, go back. Let's, let's talk a little bit about grading. Because, could you pop up the grading sheet for us? And for those of us with old eyes, you might need to enhance it a little bit.
Thanks, Pete.
Is that good?
That's good. So let's talk about where the grades are now, what you're going to have to come up to with the elevation of the foundations based on the water table.
Right. So first of all, I, I do want to point out that all of these house footprints and locations are really conceptual. I think we want to show you, you know, that, that the lots are workable. If we were going to build a house, this is probably about the size that we would build and all that. But, you know, until there's a purchaser in mind and you know, some formal agreements, we, we don't know exactly what, what the plan is going to be. We know that the house is going to conform to zoning. And, and we think these are, again, pretty good sized footprints and pretty good locations. Now, just as an example, this is lot number two here. We've, we're showing, you know, slab at fifty-three. And we've got an existing grade in the house location of fifty-four. So that's slab, that basement elevation is probably one foot below existing grade. And when we, you know, do test pits and we find out that the water table is two feet below existing grade, that's probably about as low as we want to go. Mr. McNiff has built houses like this before. And basically, we bring in some fill in front of the house. We put some landscaping in there. So that when you drive up, you're not looking at, you know, six feet of exposed foundation. So it won't look like a house that is sticking unreasonably out of the ground. And as I mentioned, all these houses will need zoning, so there'd be no height constraint, or, you know, there'll be no exceedances of whatever is allowed for, for building height as well. But that's, you know, that's pretty much what we would do in that example of Lot One. Looks like we've got a similar situation, slab at fifty-three, existing grade outside at fifty-four.
Okay, great. Let's go back to, hey, throw the chair again, Larry, if it's okay.
Oh.
Yep. We're going to now introduce a driveway from this configuration for one sixty-eight onto this private way. So I, I would encourage, yes, an easement, I think, would be necessary because you're going to have someone practically, you know, basically coming on and off this private road all the time. And there, that would be necessary documentation along with your HOA documentation from the legal team to come back to us so that, of course, we could have those documents reviewed. So that piece definitely needs to be put into place. I think it's imperative as part of this package, you know, to get it, to, to get it close to the finish line. And the beaut- one of the beautiful things about so much of Newbury and Byfield and Blomile is we've had the ability to have our roads repaved recently, which is wonderful. So our roads are really in good shape and the highway department's done a great job of taking care of them. As a result, posted speeds are oftentimes exceeded. And I think probably everyone sitting in this room would appreciate that usually a thirty-five mile an hour zone is not a thirty-five mile zone. So that's where my concern comes in, even though we've said line of sight by highway standards is acceptable. If people are, in reality, traveling at faster speed than they typically do, it becomes a greater concern of people coming in and out of this narrow space and negotiating around the telephone pole. Now, you might not think the telephone pole's an issue. It, you know, it might not be, and if it was your driveway, it might not be an issue, but this is going to be a street. And I, and I really need to feel comfortable. And you've heard from other board members that have done the site walk, that were there that said, you know, they're not comfortable with that. So let's talk a little bit about that.
So, you know, I think we can, perhaps we can paint on the edge of the ground, the proposed edge of the, of the road so that you can see that you can actually get out and get, get around that telephone pole. To me, it's not that close. We could get National Grid to come out here and take a look at the telephone pole and see if they think it's reasonable or not. You know, I, I just, again, I, I think it's fine the way it is. And I didn't get a negative, nothing came up with Mr. Sawakka's review. I don't, I, I, I think that
We just look at it. We'll look at it, see the dishing of the pole, see what the transformer, is it a primary? How many lines from the other houses? We'll get National Grid out there to look at it and see if it's movable.
I think that's a great idea, Mr. McNiff. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. Larry, that might be all that I have right now. I don't know if there's anyone else that has any other questions at this time.
Could I do a follow-up on that one, Pete? On the telephone pole, it's, it, the house that sits right there on the street near the telephone pole, it's really a, a quick turn to get in and out. And the telephone pole could impede any structural traffic that, you know, as somebody comes in, that could interfere with people that live right there on the corner. So the telephone pole, I, I truly believe is it takes away the, the, the sightline as far as the street is concerned. And when you're turning it into a street and making it not a driveway anymore. That's all, that's all.
Thank you, Leslie. Anybody else? I, I think at this point, it, it might be helpful to everyone if we took a look at the requested waivers. We haven't done that. And maybe even just take a straw poll and one, where the board is at, given the, the existing state of the plans and the information we have. Martha, can you pull up the waivers requested for the subdivision?
Yes, I can. Bob, can you stop sharing, please?
Oh, yeah. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
So the I just want to remind everyone of the standard for granting a waiver from our subdivision regulations is, it, it, it's in our, in our regulations, and it also mirrors the general laws that the board may waive strict compliance with any of these regulations if it deems it in the public interest. And if written record is kept of such waivers and the reasons for them. So if we go down the list of waivers, the, I've just polled the board members individually. On the environmental analysis, Pete, what's your feeling on that?
I'm, I'm, I'm still thinking on that one a little bit. Thanks.
Want, want me to come back to you?
That'd be great. Yep.
Yeah, George?
Yeah, I'm a favor.
Okay, Leslie?
I'm still on the fence on this one.
Woody?
I don't know. An environmental analysis would be helpful there. So I, I don't know if I'm full that way.
I'm sorry, Woody. I didn't catch your last.
I, I, so I'm not sure that I'm full that way.
Yeah, I, right now, I, I share Woody's opinion. I mean, this is, this is a very problematic site. And I think you're you're being aggressive in what you're trying to do with the site. All right, let's move on to the general layout and dimensions, the required thirty-foot property line radius at the street intersection, Pete?
Yeah, I have a problem with this.
You do? Okay. George?
No problems.
Leslie?
I have a problem with it.
Okay, Woody?
I, I have a problem as well, yes.
You, you do or do not? I'm sorry.
I, I do. Yes, I'll, I'll try and speak clear. I apologize.
Yeah, no, that's all right. Yeah, I, I, I still share the concerns about, about the intersection there. So right now, I think we've got four members who are leaning against granting this waiver. As to the street location and alignment, they're going from the required right of way of fifty-three feet to fifty feet. Pete?
I'm okay with that.
You're okay with that? George?
I'm okay.
Leslie?
I'm okay with that.
And Woody?
I'm okay with that as well. Yes.
I'm, I'm going to be the one dissenting vote. I, I, I have some concerns about that. The next waiver is for the typical roadway cross-section for the required roadway crown swale on both sides and street trees. Pete, what are you, what's your feeling about that?
I'm okay with this.
Yeah, George?
That's fine.
Leslie?
I'm okay with it.
Woody?
I'm okay with it, too.
Yeah. I hesitantly would say yes. I, I just I want to be double sure about the, about the drainage there. Lastly, sidewalks and bikeways, Pete?
I'm a biker, but I'm okay.
You're okay with that? George?
That's acceptable.
Leslie?
Acceptable.
Woody?
I'm okay with it.
I am as well. I'm okay with it. And the street treats, street trees. Pete?
I'm okay with this.
Sorry, I'm tripping over my tongue tonight, George?
No problem, I accept it.
Yeah, Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
And I agree with the majority on that. Martha, can we pull up the criteria for the common driveway special permit?
Sure.
And the, in particular, the findings that were required to make for that.
All right, can you see those, the findings, or where my cursor?
Yes, yes, thank you. So special permit required, the planning board shall make the following findings relative to the common driveway special permit. A, the use requested is noted in the zoning bylaw as a special permit in the district for which the application is made. Pete, do you see any issue there?
I'm okay with that, but can Martha, is it possible to make that larger?
Let me try.
Okay. Or you're going to see me leaning into the computer, which is okay.
That's okay.
Right there with you.
Yeah, unfortunately, this is on my.
Yep.
I'll try, but you might need to, might need to keep going in the meantime.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I don't think there's any serious question.
There we go. Is that better?
That is much better, thank you.
Except the right side has been cut off by the.
Yeah, that's true.
You can move it over to the left a little bit.
I might have to take it down a little bit. Can you still see it and see all of it?
I can.
Yep, yes, I can.
All right, the, the use requested is noted, this is item A. The use requested is noticed noted in the zoning bylaw as a special permit in the district for which the application is made. Does anyone see any issue with that?
No.
No.
Yeah.
I, I agree, that's, that seems pretty straightforward. B, the requested use is essential and or desirable to public convenience or welfare. Pete, any thoughts on that?
I don't know if it's essential.
I don't either.
It's essential to creation of lot four. Well, I guess that's not necessarily true, I suppose they could at least have demonstrated that, that it's feasible to put in two separate driveways. Although I believe the Conservation Commission had some comments about that last night, is that right, Pete?
Yeah, they would like, ideally, for it not to be near the buffer zone, of course.
Right. George, any thoughts about this item B?
Essential is, it may be essential, I just, I'm not aware of the situation. It's certainly desirable for the convenience of the public. I'm going to leave essential wide open right now.
Okay, Leslie?
I have to agree with George on that, is it essential, essential or desirable? So convenience for the public and the welfare, being a small, let's say a smaller neighborhood, is it essential or is it desirable?
Okay. Thank you, Woody?
Well, I'm not sure if it's essential, but the, it, the one benefit of the common driveway would be to not have driveway stack side by side on each other due to the nature of the site.
Right, and, and that would be the desirable aspect of it, sure, that, you know, to, to cut down on, on disturbance on the site. C, the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impaired pedestrian safety. Pete, any comments or thoughts on that?
I'm okay with that.
George?
That's fine, that's just what Woody covered.
Yeah, yeah. Leslie?
I agree.
Woody?
Yep.
Yeah, and I'm in agreement as well. D, the requested use will not overload public water, drainage, sewer systems, or any municipal systems to such an extent that the requested use of any develop, or any developed use in the immediate area or any other area of the town will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting the health, safety, and general welfare of the community. Pete, you see any issues there?
No.
No, George?
No.
Leslie?
No.
Woody?
No, I don't.
No, nor do I. Any special requirements set forth are fulfilled, and while we haven't really got into special requirements yet. And F, the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts that'll be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the immediate residents or the residents of the community. Pete, any, anything?
I hope not.
No, okay, George?
No problems.
Leslie?
Uh, no.
Woody?
No.
No, I don't see any issues there either. So Martha, I think you can take that down. Before I, oh. Before I turn to public comments, did the applicant want to respond any further to any of the concerns raised, excuse me?
Well, yeah, I think that the common driveway does eliminate the stacked driveways, as has been pointed out, it reduces the amount of stormwater runoff. And it does, in my mind, anyway, certainly satisfies all of those requirements. I think the proposal to put in the private way, you know, we looked at the dimensional issues about the the thirty-foot radius and the size of the corridor when we came to for, with a conceptual plan last year. And, you know, if we could add a thirty-foot radius to the beginning of the, of the roadway, we certainly would have. But, you know, we have constraints about the land that we own, so some of those things are just impossible. And, you know, I think that, you know, the proposal to put four lots on twenty and a half acres of land is, is not a significant, not a significantly dense use of the property. I think it's very appropriate for the neighborhood, I think this is a good use compared to some of the other alternatives that have been proposed and considered for this land. And that's why we had our, you know, that's, that's why we're here. So again, we think it's, we think it's a good project.
Okay, thank you. Martha, have you received any written comments to the record?
No, none.
And we can open it to the public now, are there any members of the public with raised hands?
I'm not seeing any.
Okay. So I guess I'm going to turn back to the applicant, you've heard the concerns from the board, where do you want to go from here?
Well, you, you've, you've asked for some additional information regarding the Homeowners Association, the easement, the telephone pole, we're happy to provide those things. You know, do you think it's worth continuing to, to provide you information?
May I say something, Larry, it's my, I want to thank the board for all the work, and I appreciate the candor and opinion. Everybody's done, I certainly appreciate everything Martha's done, and I think that Bob Griffin has just put on an exceptional, exceptional presentation since we started this. I, I, we went to the neighbors before we even started, because we had known that the previous application wasn't going to work. And then they all got up in arms about that, and forcing some type of housing into that area. I, I don't think anybody wanted that. When we were out marketing the property, what a Bulgarian estate, and as you know, half of it is, goes to Mrs. Jankovic. They've been there since the eighteen nineties, the other half goes to Essex. The Aggie, they wanted to find out what type of options they had over there. And they got a, a lot of different interests, there, there were nonprofits, there were kennel clubs, there were horse rescue, equine hospitals that wanted to go in there. There, there, there were government-type things like where they needed special permits, whether it be medicinal farming or, or solar farming. But we went to the town, we tried to find out what was good, we talked to the neighbors before we came in there. We went back to the board initially to see what could be attractive here. There was a limited access there, because I think when the Jankovitch's sold their homestead, which is to the right of the way, they left a fifty-foot right away. And I think at the time, someone thought that was equal to what would be acceptable at most towns. And certainly, the radiuses have changed, things have changed over the years. And I think that's why they bind themselves in this restricted area. But all in all, I, I think it's a plan, it's, for, for all the alternatives, is attractive. I think the neighbors really supported it. I think the immediate abutters and all the abutters on passion, I don't want to say every single one, but you've heard from them. And we tried to appease any of their concerns, so certainly if you think we should stop that some of the benefits that we can offer the town, whether it's agriculture, or try and do some things for the neighbors, then we'll stop. But I think for something that the neighbors and the town will be happy with, I think it's a good alternative.
All right, you know, one, one of the things we have to be cognizant of is that we have a, we have a clock on this. And I think we have just about a month left. Unless there's, there's a, a written agreement for an extension. We have a month left in order to render a decision and file it with the town clerk, whether it be for or against. So we have to make a decision now, I think, as to whether or not to request, Martha, well, let me turn to Martha. Martha, if, if, do you think you have enough information, a sense of the board to at least start a draft of a decision on this?
Quite honestly, I think it would be a little difficult right now.
Okay, okay. So I, I, I don't think we're ready to bring this to a vote tonight. Well, let me get a sense of the board. Pete, what, what's your feeling?
I think there's a little bit more work to be done through our discussions, even that we've had tonight. The, we're going to need, you know, the documents to be reviewed, we don't have any documents, we don't have an easement to review, and so that's legal stuff. We're talking about putting stuff into sixty-one A with whichever mechanism that seems to be most appropriate. And the board is supportive of that, as was conservation last night. So I think that's something worth exploring and, and enhancing upon, that's going to take time. So my feeling is rather than probably asking for a vote at this point in time, is ask for continuance. Let's do some, let's do some homework, let's do some collaboration, let the attorneys get together and have conversation so that you can have the type of outcome that you want. From what I understand, the, the site's going to be planted, so you're going to be harvesting this year. So it's not as though you're telling us we need to put shovels in, that you have, you know, things ready to go. This is going to be another crop year production, which, you know, we're, we're glad that that land is continuing to be used that way. So I think, you know, requesting a, you know, a written extension and having some more, you know, having some work that we've talked about, explored, might be beneficial at this point in the process.
Good, thanks, Pete, George, anything to add?
Yeah, I concur with Peter one hundred percent. The other thing I would add is that I think the easement, written easement and recorded for your neighbor next door at one sixty-eight is essential. Agreements without a recorded document have a tendency to be forgotten or confused, especially when you have houses turning over from time to time. Some people will say, why am I responsible for this or that? So the easement will be very clear and very precise. That's all I have.
Thank you, George, Leslie?
I'm in concer- concurrence with both George and Pete. There's a little bit more thing, the easement is really important to examine and there were a few other things that, you know, just a few more details would, would make it much more clear.
Okay, and Woody?
I agree with what's been said, really, an extension, they have the time with a season of crops there to work on some of the things that we've mentioned tonight and in the past, and just, and come back with a little bit better, some better answers on some of the few concerns that the board has.
Okay, and Mary, I'm sorry, I admitted to calling you earlier on something, but I apologize.
You're forgiven, Larry. I think pretty much the wisdom here is what George said and everyone has said. And I, I think it just makes a lot of sense to.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, my sense of it, and, and I truly appreciate, I think this is a very, very difficult site for you, Bob Griffin. And, and I don't quarrel with the work that you've done, I just, I think it's just in a very aggressive use of a problem site. So I, I have some reservations, but I think that what I'm hearing from the majority of the board is would like to keep an open mind and get some more information, tighten up some of these issues that have been discussed tonight. So if you're in agreement, you know, we can continue this public hearing. Martha, what, what are your thoughts, assuming that they are in agreement, what are your thoughts on a continuance date? Always give her the hard questions.
I guess in part it really depends on, on when, you know, when Bob and Michael might be able to come back with information to address the concerns that were raised. And having discussions with National Grid sometimes can take a long time to have that happen.
And maybe a better question for you was, what do you, just looking at your expertise, what do you think would be a comfortable extension date, assuming that they're willing to, to give it?
Yeah, so we've got a month, month until action needs to be taken and decision filed with the clerk. Yeah, maybe, yeah, a month or two after that.
Is that, that agreeable, gentlemen?
So we'll start with thirty days and see how we do, and if we're making progress, we'll get down to thirty days.
All right, and, and when, what would you, you want to come back, let's see, this is April nineteenth, you want to come back first? I'm trying to think.
June twenty-first, that would be the second, Larry, June twenty-first.
June twenty-one?
That'd be sixty days.
That would be for the extension.
That'd be for the extension. Probably at least start to get it on the agenda for at least you will where before then.
Absolutely, so the next, our next regularly scheduled meeting is, is, is May third, meeting after that is May seventeen.
May seventeenth makes sense for you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we should be able to have a lot of those answers for you, no problem.
Good, but all right, so you'll, you'll get a, an agreement to, written extension to Martha. And that said, I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing until seven fifteen PM on May seventeenth via Zoom. So moving. Thank you, Pete, is there a second?
Second.
I think I heard Leslie. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing then, Pete, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
George, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Leslie, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Mary, you're in agreement?
I am.
And I vote yes as well, so it's unanimous. Well, thank you for, for your presentation tonight, and look forward to seeing you on the seventeenth.
Yes, thank you all of you, thank you, thanks, good night.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, the next item on the agenda is a new public hearing, site plan review approval application for construction of a sidewalk extension and pedestrian walkway and related site improvements on the Governor's Academy campus, Byfield, Mass. At three thirteen, Newburyport Turnpike, Turnpike, map R fifteen, parcel eleven, and, excuse me, three oh six, Middle Road, map R fifteen, parcel five, owner applicant to Governor's Academy, one Elm Street, Byfield, Mass. And Woody, could you read the public hearing notice, please?
Yes, excuse me. Legal notice, Newburyport Daily News, Tana Newbury Planning Board. Legal notice, Newbury Port Daily News, Town and Newbury Planning Board Public Hearing Notice. Residents of the Town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Wednesday, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, at seven fifteen, the Newbury Planning Board will hold an online virtual public hearing via Zoom to consider the application for site plan and review approval submitted by the Governors Academy, one Elm Street by Field Mass, for construction of a sidewalk extension and pedestrian walkway and related site improvements on the Governor, uh, Governors Academy Campus by Field Mass. At three thirteen Newbury Port Turnpike, map R fifteen parcel eleven, and three oh six Middle Road, map R fifteen parcel five. As shown on the drawings entitled the Governors Academy Pedestrian Walkway, Middle Road, dated March first, two twenty twenty-three, revised March seventh, twenty twenty-three, revised March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, and described in supporting documents prepared by Mark Bowdre, Civil Works, New England. The application is on file for review during regular business hours with the town clerk and in the planning office, twelve Kentways, fleet one-on-one, Byfield Mass. It may also be viewed on the planning boards section of the town's website. For more information, contact the planning office by phone at nine seven eight four six five oh eight six two, extension three one two, or by email at planningboard@townofnewbury.org. All persons interested or wishing to be heard relative to the proposed development should appear at the time and place designated herein. Interested persons may participate in the hearing remotely from their computer, tablet, or smartphone at H, at HTTPS, semicolon, slash slash, US O two web, W E B dot zoom, dot U S slash J slash eight three two seven one four one three oh five six, or by telephone by calling one nine two nine two oh five six oh nine nine U S. And using meeting ID number eight three two seven one four one three oh five six. Or may watch the hearing live on local access cable channel nine or at www.tncTV.org. Uh, that's Larry Murphy, Chair of Newbury Planning Board, and this was published in the Newbury Port Daily News on April third and April tenth of twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Woody. Uh, Martha, has the applicant submitted proof of notification, including? Okay. All right, and, um, thank you. Uh, so who's going to be making the presentation? Mark Bowdre, is that you?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, good evening, member, uh, members of the board, Martha, Kristen, uh, good to see you all again. Uh, with me this evening is Tom Woodruff, from, uh, Director of Facilities at the Governors Academy, as well as Wendy Reed, who's the Environmental Health and Safety Manager at Governors. And, um, the, uh, the three of us, I think, have been, come to be known as Team T G A. So anyway, the, um, what we'd like to, we, we, we met with the, uh, with the planning board. It was, of course, not a public hearing back on March fifteenth, and I think we went through the, the plans very quickly at that point. And, uh, but I'm, uh, you know, prepared to, uh, go through those again for any members of the public that might be joining us. And, um, I do want to say before I forget that we have, um, as Mr. Pecos can attest, uh, we, we did, we have made, uh, gone through the Newbury Conservation Commission and, uh, a order conditions of the, of, was voted, um, in approval of the project, uh, last evening, actually. So, um, we've, uh, we've made some good progress on this, uh, since the last time we met. And, uh, also, uh, we have, uh, a, a review was completed by, uh, Mr. Zawaka, and, uh, we have responded to those comments over the last few weeks. And I'm happy to say that we, I believe, have, uh, addressed satisfactorily all of his, uh, his, his review comments. And I don't think there are any real issues, uh, remaining as far as that's concerned. So we like that, that's some additional progress that's been made, so. Um, maybe what I could do just real quick is, uh, share screen here.
Please.
And let's see. Hopefully I can, uh, not have, I've, I've had some issues doing this before. Can, can the board see that plan?
Uh, I don't see anything, no.
No, I don't see anything.
Um, darn. Let me.
If you're having real trouble, I might, I might be able to do it.
Yeah, what I was pulling up was the, uh, the overall con- context plans. How about right now, still no?
No.
Okay, wow. Frustrating. We had, we had two context plans. One was the showing the overall relation of the walkway to the key Governors Campus. And then it was the second one zoomed in a little bit, showing how related to the, uh, um, Environmental Studies Building that's under construction. We've got a lot of stuff open here. Wow. I don't know what, whatever. I apologize.
Good, take your time.
Mark, I think I can do them if you're having trouble.
Yeah, why, why don't you go ahead, Martha? I appreciate the help on that.
Okay, I'm not sure that, so there are two here, I'm not sure, do you want the one, which one would you like?
Overall one that's called Campus.
Well, I'll pull one up and hopefully.
Yeah, e- either one, Martha, I think we'll, we'll be fine. I think a lot of people are familiar with the area. Yep, there we go. So this is the one, uh, this is the plan that shows the north end of the, uh, Governors Academy Campus with the stretch along, uh, Middle Road. You can see on the, um, if you zoom in a little bit, you can see their, uh, some of their athletic fields on the right-hand side, there's, um, uh, yep, and then a little further to the north, uh, you can see the two facilities buildings. And then just north of the facilities building is the, um, uh, the Alford, um, Coastal Research Center, A C R C, which, uh, previously has been known as the Parker River Environmental Studies Building, or Presby we used to call it. So that's, uh, the building highlighted and shaded in green. So if we, uh, if we zoom in a little bit, you can, uh, the, the red, uh, line work is the proposed walkway. And what we're going to do is, uh, there's a, down at the southerly end of that and the west-hand side of Middle Road, yep, is, uh, a driveway that goes to some campus buildings, dorm buildings and whatnot, and, uh, with a soccer field in the back, as you can see. And there's a sidewalk that runs, paved sidewalk that runs along the side of Middle Road that, um, ends just on the other side of the dr- right about there, yep, thank you, Martha. So we'll have about a hundred and fifteen feet of, uh, paved sidewalk matching the existing one that'll run along the side of Middle Road, but separated from the road by a grass strip. And then the walkway will turn in, uh, perp- to be perpendicular to the Middle Road and cross in a painted crosswalk. And then we'll go, uh, uh, across to, um, start going, uh, cross-country, if you will. You can see the, uh, the, the hatched areas of wetland that, uh, will be crossed with an elevated boardwalk. It'll then be, uh, convert to a, a crushed rock permeable pathway that is five feet wide in stone with an additional, uh, graded level shoulder eighteen inches wide on each side. So we'll have an effective, uh, width of, uh, level area of, uh, of, uh, eight feet. It'll then go, um, uh, through the woods and will cross over the, the berm of the stormwater basin that will be just to the right of the pathway there that, uh, is part of the facilities campus. And we'll, uh, we'll have another elevated boardwalk that's, uh, about twenty-four feet long going over the stone spillway. It'll then convert back into stone and then, uh, go uphill and then follow along the, uh, the, the facilities driveway till the, to, to cross again, a painted crosswalk to the far side right there. And then, um, you know, students, uh, you know, uh, faculty staff, they will then walk along the edge of the driveway, um, going over to the, uh, walkway that leads to the Environmental Studies Building, the, uh, A C R A Building. So, um, it will be stone as well along the side of the, uh, of the driveway. And there's a Cape Cod berm in that area for stormwater control, but it'll be another grass strip and then the, then the walkway. So, um, the overall, the, um, we've got, um, uh, let's see, I had that written down. We call it being about four hundred and, uh, here we go, four hundred and thirty-two feet of crushed rock path, a hundred and thirty-two feet of, uh, you know, elevated boardwalk that all, that is five feet wide, by the way, similar to the, uh, boardwalk that is under construction for the, uh, Environmental Studies Building. And, um, so the, and then I mentioned earlier, a hundred and fifteen feet of paved pathway, uh, walkway on the west side of, uh, of Middle Road. So the overall, including an allowance for the, uh, for the, uh, peers, for the, uh, for the, for the boardwalk, uh, we've got a total of, uh, seven thousand and eighty-two square feet. Because that's in excess of five thousand square feet of work area, that includes the offgrading, by the way. Uh, we are looking at a level-two site plan review. Now, for the walk, for the boardwalk itself, um, there was some discussion, uh, uh, with conservation, et cetera, uh, about the, the height of the walkway. Uh, Mr. Zawaka also had mentioned that in his initial comment letter, just, uh, you know, about the height of the walkway and if railings would be required and things like that, um, for the boardwalk part. It was intentionally kept low, uh, to the ground. It's, uh, at most thirty feet, I'm sorry, thirty inches off of the, uh, off grade. And, um, yeah, minimum of fifteen. And because it's going to be somewhat down, uh, closer to the wetland area, uh, we had a, an open, uh, grid fiberglass slip-resistant, uh, you know, grading on there that has sixty-two percent open area. So it'll pass a lot of water, allow a lot of sunlight through. And the, uh, we wanted intentionally to keep it down low so that it'll be low profile. But at the same time, um, you know, I not, not have to have, uh, railings. And the, uh, that was acceptable to the Conservation Commission. And, um, we, uh, and when we responded to, I think, in the act to Mr. Zawaka, I think he's, uh, accepted that as well. So the, um, that was, you know, preferred from an aesthetic standpoint, et cetera. And, um, so we do have a, what I call a bumper on either side of the, uh, the, the, the elevated walkway, you know, for, uh, any wheelchairs and things like that to provide a, a bumper. So, uh, you know, you, you wouldn't go right off the edge. And, um, and speaking of wheelchairs, I think it's very important to point out that this, uh, pathway is designed to be fully ADA, A A B compliant. And that's relative to surface, it's relative to longitudinal slopes that are all less than five percent. We called out, uh, four and a half percent maximum and also cross slopes. And, um, the, uh, which are less than two percent, we have, uh, you know, one and a half percent proposed. And importantly, that open area grading that I mentioned a bit ago, um, is ADA compliant as well. So we were all very careful in, uh, you know, the design, selection of the materials and the, and the grading and things like that to, uh, you know, make sure that it's, uh, fully ADA, uh, uh, compliant. So the, um, you know, ju- jumping ahead a little bit, the, uh, as I mentioned, we, we, we have Conservation Commission approval at this point, which is great. Uh, there's no oth- other things that would be relevant to site plan review. There is no walkway-specific signage proposed, there's no parking, there's no building associated with the, the walkway, of course, is not going to generate any vehicle trips. And in fact, the, 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 uh, A C R R C building is, uh, actually intended to be accessed primarily, uh, by pedestrians. And, um, the, uh, there will be some, you know, accessible vehicles, um, needed occasional delivery vehicles, um, in inclement weather, um, there'll be shuttle buses. But, um, so we think that the, you know, the, the, the potential vehicle conflicts, especially along the driveway, are going to be very, very limited. So what we did want to do, though, is have a, a walkway that, you know, got a, that, that interacted with Middle Road, uh, on a, uh, you know, minimal basis to, uh, to make sure that there were no conflicts with, uh, you know, with traffic on Middle Road. Not to say that Middle Road is a very heavily traveled road, but still. We did look at a couple of alternatives, um, that, uh, had routes along Middle Road that would then go up the, uh, the facilities driveway. Those resulted in more wetland impact, more floodplain impact, um, which, by the way, is elevation ten on this, on this site. And I could talk to that if you will, we went through that with conservation. Uh, but the, uh, by the way, the wetland impacts, the, any, any flooding, all that's being replicated, um, on site. And, um, so, uh, yeah, the, uh, uh, that we, you, you, you were talking about National Grid in the last, uh, hearing. National Grid actually put a series of, uh, utility poles in along Middle Road on the east side that, uh, really got in the way of any route that we might have been able to have along Middle Road. So, um, I, I, we, we think this is a, uh, a really good solution that I think will be very, you know, uh, environmentally friendly. The, you may recall that there's a lot of opportunities around the, uh, Science Building, you know, for interaction of the students and staff with the environment. And I think this will provide a, uh, a, you know, a, a, another vehicle as far as that goes. Um, the, uh, we can talk about lighting in just a minute, but it's not going to generate any water usage or waste water discharge, no solid waste. And, uh, we, yeah, and no vegetated buffer screening is needed or warranted because it's going through the, uh, you know, a natural area. And, um, so back to lighting, we do have a, uh, we submitted a photo metric.
Can I, can I interrupt you here? Let's, uh, let, let me turn to the board members at this point, see if they have any questions on what's on the screen, and then we'll, we'll come to the lighting, if that's all right.
Sure.
Yeah, uh, Pete, uh, based on what we have here, do you have any questions?
No questions, Larry, thanks.
Um, uh, George, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, the only question I had before Mark started was about the use of bumpers on each side of the walkway. And he mentioned those, and I'm quite satisfied, thank you.
Thank you, George. Uh, Leslie?
Um, the only question I have is when you refer to the walkway as having crushed gr- uh, stone, um, what kind of crushed stone is it? Is it, uh, uh, like, uh, yardstone? Is it, uh, uh, construction gra- uh, stone? But will the, I know you've, there's been construction stone that was been installed into the old bike path for the, uh, work vehicles to get in on that side. Will it be a smaller grade?
Oh, definitely. Um, that, for, for that, those construction vehicle accessories, you're looking at more of a, a heavier traprock-type stone to, that would facilitate getting mud and whatnot off, off the tires. It's more for anti-tracking. This, but that is absolutely not a surface that would be ADA compliant. So it, it's got to be a surface that a wheelchair can walk.
Wheelchair can get over, whether it's a, uh, a manual or an electrical wheelchair.
So this is actually, we're proposing, you know, we mentioned in our narrative, um, that it's a, and I believe on the plan too, a quarter inch minus crushed rock with a crusher dust, uh, in there that will be, uh, uh, you know, compactable, uh, it'll be firm and stable. And, um, And um, but at the same time being very permeable. It's a. It's a surface that we, we looked at that are, that, that, that's recommended by, you know, for ADA type compliant pathways, and it's. It does require a little bit of maintenance over time. And um. The uh. Governors Academy actually has a um. A uh. What, what's called the buffer zone management plan that's been approved by the Conservation Commission to. Maintain other trails and whatnot on campus, and this will be worked into that to. Allow this uh, pathway to be, you know, reasonably maintained it. You, you, every now and then it'll need a little bit of uh, you know, touch up with uh, with, with stone, uh, you know, to be compact and whatnot, but. Little bit of fine grading every now and then with rake and whatnot. It, but it can be shoveled, it can be, we can use uh, you know.
A small facility plow, like sidewalk plow type of thing to remove the snow.
Yeah, we, we were actually thinking about not having it be uh. We, we, early on, we thought about having the governors, uh, you know, small utility vehicles being able to do that, but we decided to not go that route. But snow blowers, uh. Uh, you know, uh. Power brooms, uh, things like that could definitely be used, and we discussed that with conservation as well. So. The beauty of the permeable surface is that um. The, the runoff associated will be very minimal, and um. So we, we believe that we've complied with the uh, Massachusetts Stormwater Standards that require. Foot pass, bike pass, pedestrian pass, et cetera. Um. To be complied with the regs to the uh, the standards to the maximum extent practicable, which we believe that we have, and um. I think Mr. Zoraka was in agreement on that, so we talked about that quite at length with uh. In our narrative and also um. Reviewed that with the D E P as part of the Conservation Commission process, actually, and, and of course, the Conservation Commission, so. I think that's uh, that's, that's looked at pretty closely, so, but yeah, good question.
And one more question. What is the uh? Elevated height of the walkway considering it doesn't have uh, handrails on either side? And what, what is, why, it's, if it's elevated, what's underneath it, and? If it is uh, a wetland type of area, what is the depth of the water um, during a high tide type of uh?
Yeah, I did. The. At the highest point, it's thirty inches off. The grade off the wetland. And at the lowest point, it's about fifteen inches off. And that wetland. It is, it is floodplain. But the uh, but as it, which is the shaded part of the, you can see on our uh. Our sheet, uh, C one plan. But it's uh. The deck, we do have a plan and profile view. On sheet C two. And the uh. The, 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 the deck of the, is elevated above the floodplain elevation, and. For those of you that are familiar with that wetland, it's quite dry, it's quite, quite rocky, it's quite dry. Um. I honestly have never seen any wat- wet water in it, on the other side, on the west side, yes, but on the uh. On the east side. Pretty, pretty dry, and. I think the, talking with the Conservation Commission with the D E P. We. The, I, I think the feeling was is that this walkway did not have to meet the typical one-to-one standard, which. If it's five feet wide, it would have to be five feet off the wetland, like. You might have for a, over salt marsh, you know, for example. Uh. We, we, we didn't have to uh, meet those criteria, especially with the opening area. It's a fairly dry wetland, it's bony. And is, it, it's a uh, there's a lot of shade in that wetland, so I think we, everybody felt like um. Having it down lower would be appropriate, and. Something that's a maximum of thirty inches high does not need railings by code. So, but we, we obviously didn't want. For the, for the wheelchair situation and whatnot. We wanted to have those bumpers on the side. So. Yep.
Thanks.
What do you, do you have anything?
No, uh, no questions or comments at this time, thank you.
Uh, Mary?
Um, just about the rock that um, goes on the walkway. Um, again, I think that uh, Leslie. Yes. The questions that I was going to ask, but. So if you put down a wheelchair on that. Rock, is it like a, a driveway that has cement? Um, and the rock in it, or not as stable?
It's, I would say it's not like concrete, but it is like a uh. Think if you had a, if, if you had a gravel driveway. You know, that uh. Or a. It, it's, it's, it's often referred to as like, I don't wanna call it stone dust, it's not that fine. But there is this, a crusher dust in it. That allows it to be more compactable. But it's only, the biggest stone is only a quarter inch. So it's uh, you know, it, it's a, it is a fine um. Stone products, sandy stone, if you will.
So it's a mixed material.
Yeah, oh yeah, definitely, which allows it to be uh, compacted. And, and, and stable. But at the same time, be permeable.
So wheelchair cane will sink in?
That is correct, it will not sink in, and it's, one thing we did uh, call for in our plan originally was a uh. A three inch thickness. Of stone. And uh. Mr. Uh, Zawaka was concerned that that was maybe more of a design for lighter foot traffic. And I didn't disagree with them, but I. What we, but. It's, it's adequate if you have a stable subgrade, which we are gonna have here, because the. Where we're using the, the, the rock. Area, stone area is in a uh, the upland area, so. Um. But as a, as a compromise, we did agree to go up to a four inch thickness of stone in our response. Um, to provide a uh, you know, uh, to allow for a heavier uh, foot traffic, which uh. Mr. Zoraka found acceptable.
And it will maintain a natural. Uh, look to it as you're going through. That area.
Yes. I did a similar pathway in uh, in Concord along the Aspet River, and it's held up remarkably well through the years. And um, we were quite pleased with it, and I kinda use that as a. A uh, bit of a uh. Study sample for uh, for this design, actually.
Thank you again.
Yeah. Good, sounds good, Mark, for those who are. Disabled.
Good, thank you, I actually have answered all my questions, uh, before we turn to the lighting, uh, Martha or Kristen, either of you have any questions? No, okay.
No, I just, I could add Murphy, uh, Larry, a couple. Just, we did have this reviewed by um, other town staff. Um, Mark explained it's. You know, Samantha, the conservation agent, has been reviewing it as part of their review. Um. The only other comments have been answered, I think. Peter, the building inspector said. He'd be. You know, working with governors in terms of the ADA compliance during the building permit process, he was comfortable with everything. Um. James Saret. Said he, he was also comfortable with the project, he would. There may be a need for a um, curb cut permit regarding the sidewalk. In relation to the driveway by the um. By the dorm, the driveway to the fields at the start of the new sidewalk, but that was not. Problematic in any way, um. And that was it. You know, fire chief and police chief were comfortable with it.
All right, thank you, Kristen. Um, Martha, do you, do we wanna look at the lighting? Plan?
Uh, yes, I think so, that came in just this afternoon, so that's new to all of us.
You know, we apologize for that. We, we actually had a lot of uh, back and forth with the lighting vendors, uh, you know, getting it to all of our satisfaction internally. Took a little bit longer to. Get produced than we had hoped, but um. It fortunately got it out for tonight, so.
Would you like me to pull it up, Martha?
Um, if you'd like to, I've got it here, so I can do it as well.
On detail, uh, sheet C five, we had a. Of our site plan set, we have a uh, I, I. They could, I, uh, detail on the light fixture itself.
Can you see that plan?
Um, all I can see is Tom Wodraff has started screen sharing.
Yeah, and my screen is completely frozen, perfect.
Wow. Everybody seems to be having problems tonight.
I assure you, all of our faces look great, we're frozen in really. Places.
Tom, can you stop sharing and I can try to pull it up?
Oh, yeah. Okay, you can see mine? Oops, sorry.
Is that yours, Tom?
Yes, I think I'm controlling it, yep.
All right, cool.
So. Go ahead, Mark.
Go ahead, you can present it, Tom.
Uh, sure, yeah, this, so as Mark mentioned, we've been working with a, a lighting manufacturer's rep, um, to do a. A photometric plan, select a fixture and a layout, we had sort of a rough layout worked out that Mark came up with. Um, not, not knowing specific, specifically what fixture we would be using, uh, but the lighting manufacturer's rep helped us. Put together this, this plan, including um. Eighteen fixtures total, which I think matches what Mark is showing on the plans, their locations are slightly modified from the plan. Um, and that was based on making some changes to help coverage across the pedestrian, the, the middle road crosswalk here. Um, as well as in, increased coverage on this area of the uh. The sidewalk extension. Um. The uh, the minimum foot candles on the pathway, on the pathway and sidewalk is point one. And the average, I think, came in at uh, five point six lumens, with a max of thirty four point five. The fixture uh, that we ended up going with is a dark sky compliant fixture, bollard style light. Has zero. Um, zero light transmission above ninety degrees. And um, we think works well for this application, we had to go through a couple of different fixtures to make it work with the fewest number of fixtures possible. Uh, with still coverage across the whole. The whole walkway. Um, we think we've come to a good solution here, sort of providing enough lighting to. Uh, provide safe travel on the walkway while still minimizing the amount of uh, nuisance lighting in the area as it is a, you know, a natural area. And it's on the outskirts of campus where it starts to get pretty quiet. Um.
There, um. Yeah, the, the light, the light fixtures are, you know, forty to fifty feet on center, you know, so they're not like uh. Uh, you know, twenty feet on center or anything like that, so um. The um. Also. Uh, let's see, what else, um, oh, we, we do have um, fifty feet, you know, forty or fifty feet on center along the boardwalk itself. And what we're thinking there is that they, they could easily be mounted to the uh. To the, uh, you know, the posts on the side of the, the piers on the side of the um, uh, boardwalk area, so that will be. Illuminated as well to get that, um, what we are seeking for the minimum uh, foot candles, so. It's also enhanced by uh, existing light poles. Right there where Tom's hand is, and then also along the uh, driveway, yep, right there.
And then there's additional lighting up here around the uh, facilities buildings that are, that are very well lit.
Right.
How far off the ground do these fixtures sit?
I'm happy to, to pull up a picture of one if that helps.
Uh, the answer's forty two inches. So they're not pedestrian scale light poles, they're, they're light bollards. Um, if you could get onto sheet C five of our plan set, Tom, there's a detail on that. Or Martha?
Do you have it handy? Looks like you're looking for it.
Yeah, I have uh. Let's see.
We grabbed it, Tom, from these, from the lighting supplemental, so uh. Might, it's on that as well.
Sorry, way too many things open here.
Yeah, I think I can do it. Hold on a sec, give it a try.
There we go, it's up in the upper left-hand corner. And we're actually right in the middle of the screen, you can see the uh, the grading. For the uh, boardwalk. Uh, next sheet, see, that's C four. Uh, also on this plan is the uh, a cross section of the boardwalk in the upper right, and on the lower right. Is, yep, is the um. The, the diamond pier uh, footings that are very similar to, that are being used for the walkway for the uh, Science Building as well. And then on the lower left is our um. Uh. Sections of the stone walkway. And uh, paved walkway, actually, Mr. Suaka had asked us to include specs for the uh. For the pavement as well that were added to the plan. Basically mass D O T standard. So there's, there's the uh. There's the light uh, fixture in the upper left.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome. And if you, you look at that view just to the left of the. That's where it labels is forty two inches, right on the plan, yep, right there, and we also indicate the dark sky compliance, uh, that Tom mentioned.
Okay, thank you. Um, let me turn to the board members, and Pete, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, you, uh, well, we'll maybe one comment, um, so having seen this conservation, uh, you know, uh, it's very encouraging to, to. Uh, seeing our planning, um. Tom, uh. Since we have little critters running around up there, and it's kind of this like little natural habitat. Have we thought about lighting and maybe modifying it somewhat so that, I don't know, motion detection or? Different type of ambient, something. You know, that won't interfere with their life?
That's a good question, we haven't thought of motion lighting, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have.
And I, and I gotta tell you, this wasn't my idea, okay, I, I'm just the first one to articulate it.
We have lots of, yeah, lots of uh, occupancy sensors and motion detected, act, motion activated lighting indoors, I've not experienced that. Outdoors, um. Typically on campus, most of the lights are on a, a dust to dawn, you know, uh, the. Sensor that, that they come on when it gets dark and shut off when it gets light. Uh, but we could also put it on a scheduled timer that uh. You know, would have it on during certain hours if it was dark, and then shut off between the hours of. You know, say midnight and five A M or four A M, um, I think typically. Campus, we like to keep pathways lit for, for safety reasons, um. And I think a lot will depend on sort of the programming that goes on in the building, I don't expect it will run later than typical programming on campus. Which can run through ten P M, ten thirty P M. Um. So I, I would expect that at a minimum, we'd wanna keep it going a little beyond that. But elsewhere on campus, it's on through the night, as you probably know.
Good news is it's not a endangered species habitat area or anything like that, so.
Hopefully it'll stay that way.
But I, I can do some research and talk to our lighting vendor as well about, uh, you know, outdoor. Sensors.
Just a thought. Sure, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pete, George?
Uh, no questions.
Oh, uh, Leslie?
Yeah, I, I would like to know if you have any examples of similar lighting on a similar walkway type of situation. And I, to take note on what Pete just said. Um, there are many uh. Just mo- great, I, I like, I like the motion detector uh, idea because um. Not to keep almost like uh, a low daylight. Going on at night and daylight going on during the day does disrupt the, the habitat of the animals in the area. So a motion detector, and it can always be set for a certain period of time. Um, I have motion light detectors on my own property and um. That uh. It, they only remain on for, you know, uh. You can set it, we're, are, we usually set it like ten minutes. Um, but um, I think it's a great idea because um, they do pass through during the, the late hours. And even though you're saying ten, ten thirty, um, it, it, um. and you could camp, put a camera on them so you can also, uh, study them as well in your natural habitat. Those are my only, my only, uh, things, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Leslie. Woody?
Uh, it's been a very, um, thorough explanation as to the lighting here. Um, but I do have one question. Just, uh, how do you? I understand that, uh, you, the safety aspects of it, but, um, how do you run power from, um, each of these bollards? Like, is that gonna be underneath the actual walkway and then when the walkway becomes elevated, the power's attached to the, uh, the power's elevated, or is it all gonna be underground? Each bollard?
Yeah, goo- good question. The, uh, it'll be under the pathway area and we anticipate that there'll be a conduit running under the, uh, the, the, the deck structure on, on the boardwalk, that it will not be underground in the wetland area. So, um, and it'll, the lighting is planned to come off of the, um, the, the lighting, uh, circuitry on the facilities, uh, driveway lights. So that'll be on the same circuitry as that system.
Okay, thank you. Welcome. Very good.
Larry. Oh, sorry. Well, that's okay, Mary.
No, I'm all set. I don't have any, anything.
Thank you, Mary.
Speaking of, uh, you know, referring to the conduit, could that be the backup? Uh, well, no, it, could that be the main? And then have like a solar facility, solar type of lighting that you could, uh, use um, that would not use any power? Um, so, you know, it would be, I mean, you're putting in, um, you know, a natural type of habitat and looking over the water and studying the ecology and things like that. Wouldn't solar make, uh, a lot better sense to use as a, as a lighting source?
Yeah, no, I can, I can speak to that a little bit. I think in, in my experience, and I, I backtrack a little bit, I have seen motion detection lighting outdoors, but not in a a commercial environment like this. I have seen it on, you know, on residences and, and above garage doors, but not on sort of outdoor pedestrian lighting. So I'll look into that. Um, but regarding the solar, I think two things, the, the pathway is so dark that typical solar lights wouldn't have enough ex- sun exposure to um, probably provide light, but we are installing.
With a natural canopy?
Yeah, it's pretty forested. It's, it's, it's gonna be a very nice, nice walk through the woods. However, um, we are installing solar panels on the two maintenance buildings that will supply that they are going to offset all of the electricity used by the new science facility. And any excess will go towards the consumption of our maintenance buildings where the power will be fed to these lights from.
That's very helpful.
So we are, yeah, we're doing some, some green things we feel good about.
Thank you.
Sure, thanks.
Hey, great. Um, before we, uh, turn to public comment, Martha or Kristen, do you have anything to add?
I had a couple of things and, um, actually closed this question to Tom previously, but, um, the lighting bollards along middle, middle road, um, are not necessarily consistent with other lighting that's on the campus. Um, you know, I understand aesthetically sort of trying to lead into the pathway, but um, it would be a little bit unusual there. I'm just wondering if there's some other options or if there's actually enough ambient light there from other fixtures that those particular bottle, bollards along the sidewalk needed.
No, that's, that's a good question, Martha. I'm glad you brought it up. Um, so the, the current campus lighting standard that we've been using for, um, the past six, well, probably eight, eight plus years for, um, area lighting and pathway lighting is a, uh, tall pole light fixture that sheds a lot of light, three hundred and sixty degrees and um, doesn't, you know, bollards, bollard style lights tend to, are designed really to light walkways and light, you know, foot traffic areas and not have light spillage, um, to other areas. In, in fact, on campus, we, you know, we receive, uh, feedback from folks that live on campus about the light fixtures that are on campus. So that it's, you know, it provides glare through their windows at night and it's not necessarily that desirable from that standpoint. Um, so we, I, I do agree with you that this light fixture is sort of a, a, uh, variance from our typical walkway lighting. But the thought was that it, um, sort of led to the transition from a fairly well-lit core of campus to a, a more sort of natural and, and less lit, uh, peripheral campus area while still, you know, see, providing enough light on the walkway to safely travel it. I'm, I'm sure there are other alternative bollards that we could look into and sort of evaluate. Um, I to the question of if there's enough cur- light there currently, I think by the corner of the road that leads down to the turf field, there is, cause there's a, there's a relatively tall, uh, street light there. And, um, but I think as you, as you go down that path further north towards the crosswalk, towards the proposed crosswalk, it would get, um, to the point where we'd need light. And I think at the crosswalk itself, we would definitely need, um, some light there. So I don't know if that helps answer that, but, uh, we could certainly consider consistency and evaluating other fixtures to more, um, be consistent with campus.
It was having your, uh, person you've been working with, just and take a look at the lighting levels at night to, you know, actually confirm that you do need that light down there. But I understand what you're saying, because you are getting to the outskirts of campus.
But, yeah, no, and, and actually he has done that in the past. So, uh, uh, that's a good point. I'll ask him to come to campus some evening and we can, we can take a look.
I'll get a light meter out there and actually see.
Yep.
Um, the other question was in terms of the color temperature of the, the LED lights themselves. One article that I actually saw this afternoon talks about the benefits of, of, I think it's long wavelength, like amber light or red light. You probably wouldn't want to use red lights there, but, um, amber light instead of, you know, obviously it's colder temperature. You know, it's more beneficial towards urban wildlife. So perhaps that's something to discuss with your consultant as well.
Sure. Yep. No, we can definitely, uh, discuss that with them and see what. I, I think this light fixture does come in, in different, uh, color scales, so we can, we can evaluate that.
Yeah, they usually do, but we'd be good to know that.
Is that something that could be done as a condition of the board's, uh, approval, that we could work that out with your office, Martha, or?
Um, do you think it'd be tough to get that, that, uh, information?
Um, I mean, I, I, I don't think so, no, but, uh, you know, we are a little anxious to get this project, uh, started. So the, the walkway is done for when the science building opens?
Yeah, I guess that would really depend on the board and, um, there, you know, might be some other points of discussion tonight, like, does the board?
Yep, I understand. Okay, uh, Martha, do we have any members of the public?
Um, I'm not seeing any members of the.
See Chris? The hand up, raised hand? Martha, um?
Um, no, I don't. So nice thing.
Larry, I just have one question. Um, I just was wondering, Mark and Tom and Wendy, if you could just zoom in on the top of the path. I feel like the board has looked, you know, at the middle road and, but I, I'm just curious and I maybe I'm the only one in the room, cause I wasn't a part of the permitting of the building. But I'd just be curious if you could describe the crosswalk across the facilities drive and what happens after the crosswalk?
Sure, maybe if we, if you pull that, uh, overall, uh, context plan back on Martha, we can then zoom in on it to the, um, as you're getting, I think, Kristen, you're saying, uh, getting closer to the, uh, uh, facilities buildings, I think would be good.
Yeah, and there's also that stormwater management system up there that that does tend to get, have standing water in it. And I just wanted just have you describe that area a little bit would be helpful. Thanks.
If you could zoom in even more, yeah, there we go. So. Yep. So you can see, let's talk about the stormwater basin first. Where the, um, where it, it's kind of the pathway is kind of angling to the northeast and then turns to the, uh, northwest. You can see that stone area that's hatched on the plan with a, with, uh, not the other side. Yep, that, that, that's the slope that drops down to the basin right there. That's actually the, um, spillway coming out of the stormwater basin. So basically between that spillway and the riprap slope that was, uh, you know, the hand was on initially, that, that is an existing stormwater basin for the maintenance buildings. And but the, um, elevation wise, the pathway is, uh, you know, gosh, six or eight feet above the, uh, that, 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 um, that stormwater basin. Uh, you know, like even, even the spillway is probably, you know, three or four feet off the bottom and then we're, we're another, um, you know, a couple of feet above that for the walkway. So we're well above the, the wa- the water, uh, level in the stormwater basin. And even if the water was high enough in the basin that it was gonna go out the spillway, it would still be a couple of feet below the, uh, the decking. So, uh, I think we're okay there. That is one. The one area where you can actually see that red, um, arrow pointing to is the, where we have two to one slopes that we had talked about with, uh, Joe Zawaka and we, the reason we did two to one there is to minimize how much fill was in there, but we're, we're, we're taking that slope that's coming out of the stormwater basin and continuing it up to the level of the, um, to the level of the, uh, uh, the, 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 the walkway there. So it's, um, uh, but it, but the top of that is gonna be eight feet wide. So it's got a good comfortable width on the top and then we slope down on the other side. So um, then the, uh, the walkway will join up and run alongside the, uh, the facilities driveway, as you can see, and then it gets to that crosswalk that we're talking about. So if you could pan down a little bit to see the science building, there we go. So um, people would then be walking on the far side which, uh, of the, of the driveway, yep. And kind of along, uh, uh, along the edge that is away from where the, um, uh, you know, vehicles might be associated with the facilities buildings. You then get into the area right now. Yep, you're there now, where the, that is a kind of a hammerhead turnaround for, uh, emergency vehicles and whatnot. And then you're into the, the parking area for the science building. And you'll notice that it's only, um, I think this is a total of six parking spaces in there, including one accessible spot. And like I said earlier, the intent is not to have everybody driving to this, uh, building. Uh, it's really intended to be more of a pedestrian type use. And once they now get to that parking area, they start interacting with, uh, the science building and they'll be, that, that's a actually stone, I'm sorry, a permeable pathway that goes up. It, it looks very black there, but it's actually the hatch pattern. It's a, it's a permeable pathway to get up to the building that you may recall. And, um, so that is all a very wide, uh, walkway uh, off pavement. So there, there's really only one stretch between the crosswalk and that walkway that is, um, that's walking along the side of the, uh, of the driveway. This is a pretty steep slope, if you recall, going up to that, um, that high ground. You know, that overlooks the Parker River up there. So, um, we didn't want to disturb that area further. And, uh, by, by having another walkway now would require a lot of, you know, retaining walls and some part, part, some rock excavation. We did have to do some rock excavation to get the walkway up to the science building, you, you may recall. And, um, and the, the traffic in there, honestly, the vehicle traffic is so light that we are very confident that there really just won't be any, uh, pedestrian vehicle conflicts in there. I don't know if that interests your questions, Kristen, or?
Yeah, thank you. That's helpful. I just was curious about those two areas. I, I have heard peepers in there, so I certainly would be encouraging of, you know, tying the mission of the building to some education around why there's certain kinds of lighting or, you know, I think there's some interesting educational opportunities there to talk about like that they're dark sky lights and what is that? I mean, that could be kind of cool in terms of doing the walk up to the building. I just, I just like that idea that you're thinking about.
Yeah, when I was with, uh, the, my former, uh, previous company, when we did the science building, uh, the, the environmental studies building, we had a similar approach with all the stormwater basins in there and, and whatnot for the same kind of educational opportunities. So, yep, I know, definitely know what you mean. Hey, great. I, I think, um, if, unless, um, anyone has any other questions, uh, let me get a sense of the board. Do you think a, a sidewalk would be helpful? Yes, no?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Pete, how, yeah?
I, I will be there in spirit.
Oh, oh, okay. I forgot you're, you're traveling, aren't you? Okay. Um, so should we, uh, any suggestions when we might set a date and time then for a sidewalk?
Not May ninth.
Not May ninth, okay.
I agree. I'll be away that week as well.
I'm sorry.
I will be away that week as well.
That entire week?
Yep.
Um, well, when, when do we want to bring this back? Probably the seventeenth of May?
I guess it depends on the nature. It doesn't seem like there are really too many questions.
No, I mean, I think the only thing maybe unresolved would just be the, uh, some questions about the lighting, but, uh, I haven't heard any negative comments. I mean, other than your request for some more information on lighting. Martha, do you think this is something where we could start thinking about drafting a decision?
It might, might be possible to do that. Or else schedule continuance for the seventh, just to try to get some of these outstanding questions answered, have a sidewalk and then start drafting at that point.
All right. So you want to, you're suggesting a continuance to May seventeen?
Um, actually, um, a continuance to I was thinking continuance maybe to the third, but that might be too soon.
Yeah, I don't know if we could get the sidewalk in before then. That would be next week.
That'd have to be next week. That's a little tight. Yeah, then I'd say maybe a continuance to the seventeenth and probably it would be possible to start working on a, on the decision based on the sense of the discussion tonight. With a few holes that need to be filled in.
Okay. Um, okay. So what about a sidewalk? I mean, Pete, you're not available. Um, George, I, I assume you would not be available. Yeah, uh, Leslie and, uh, Woody, are you available, uh, and interested in the sidewalk and Mary as well?
I'm available, but it would only make sense if there was, uh, a majority of those, as.
Yeah, and, and I think we, maybe, maybe, uh, let me suggest, uh, I mean, it, it, the area is certainly, uh, accessible from middle road. Maybe, you know, we can simply on our own, take a drive by if necessary, if we feel it necessary. I, I don't feel any, uh, any overwhelming.
Is it okay if we, would it be okay if we pulled up into the maintenance area and just kind of got out and did a, a little walk through on our own and announce? Would it be okay if we pulled up into the maintenance area and just kind of got out and did a a little walk through on our own and announced who we are?
Absolutely. Please do.
All right. Well, let's let's leave it at that then and and uh. Then I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing until May seventeenth at seven fifteen P M.
So.
Thank you, George. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Leslie. Uh, any discussion? Uh, hearing none, Pete. Uh, are you in favor?
Yes.
George, you in favor?
Yes.
Leslie, you in favor?
Yes.
And Woody, you in favor as well?
Yeah.
And Mary, I'm going to assume you're in agreement. And I go yes as well. So uh. Great. Uh, there's a lot of good information shared tonight. Thank you all and uh we'll uh see you on May seventeenth at seven fifteen.
All right, and everybody, there is uh flagging along the Sun Line route through the woods for the pathway. If you get adventurous and want to actually try to follow it through the woods, you'll see the flagging.
Okay, great.
Hey, hey, Larry, if I could before this thought leaves my head and Martha, this is going to be a question to you. When is the Orchard Street Culvered Project supposed to begin?
Um, that's not scheduled yet.
Okay, cool. I just wanted to heads up these guys just to make sure that they're they're in queue with that.
Yeah, I'm still trying to get funding for that.
Okay.
That's about a year out at least, right?
Not sure. It's all set to go once the funding is in place.
Thanks, Martha. Thanks, Larry.
Great. Uh, so the uh under new business, we have fifteen Coleman Road, Fieldstone Lane, Tom Zarico, Managers, Enco LLC. Request for release of lots three and six from the restrictive covenants. Um.
Good night, everybody.
Oh, good night. Thank you.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Okay, good night.
Tom?
Uh, good evening. Hey, thank you very much, Tom Zarico, uh Four High Street, North Endover. Uh, we're uh moving along, I think, pretty smoothly out there at the the Fieldstone and. Uh, looking forward to transferring out these next two upcoming finished homes in the next couple of months. Uh, there'll be one one lot remaining uh upon the release of these uh, which is the lot at the very end of the cul-de-sac. It's lot number four, street number eight. Um, we'll request that at a later date as we're wrapping things up. We. Expect to finish um everything. Uh, by August or at the very latest September, including uh all repaving, finished paving of everything. Um, and uh. Everything should be should be grown in and stable in every way by the end of the grow season.
Okay, thank you. Pete, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Uh, George, any questions?
I have no questions at all.
Um, Leslie, any questions?
No questions.
Uh, let's see, Woody, any questions?
No, no questions.
Mary, any questions? Mary, you're muted. I don't. Perhaps she stepped away. Martha, do you have anything?
Uh, no, I don't.
Uh, any 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 problem with releasing these lots? Your point of view?
Uh, no, I think, you know, based on the fact that lot four is still still being held, that should be sufficient to cover.
Good. But okay. That being the case, if anyone would like to make it, I would entertain a motion to release release lots three and six. From the restricted covenants.
There you have it.
Uh, thank you, Pete. Is there a second?
Second.
I think I heard Woody first. Thank you, Woody. Um, no, no discussion. Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Um, I thank you for your patience.
I'd like to talk a little bit more, but I'll let you all go. No, thank you all very much. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Uh, next item on the agenda is Seven Larkin Roads and Colombo Millennium Engineering and Coughlin Shea Professional Builders LLP. Informal presentation and discussion of planned options for proposed residential subdivision at Seven Larkin Road. Who's going to be making the presentation for the uh?
Yes, good evening. This is uh Sam Colombo speaking with Millennium Engineering. Um, I believe uh Mike Shea and Chris Coughlin from Coughlin Shea Professional Builders are also on the Zoom. Um. Yeah. Um. So again, we'd like just to uh sort of have an informal conversation with um the board to discuss two um. Potential options for residential for a residential development. Um, I'm going to attempt to share my screen and hopefully don't have any issues here. How's that?
Okay.
See that?
Yes.
I I can see it.
All right, um. So. This is um. The lot at Seven Larkin Road. Um, it really is a beautiful scenic piece of land. I've been out there myself. Um, the total lot area is roughly uh twenty six point seven acres. Um, and as you can see over here, almost the entire uh rear of the lot abuts the Parker River. Um, the plan I'm showing here is sort of our first look at a five lot definitive yield plan. Um, we would be proposing. Um, a twenty five foot wide, um twelve roughly twelve hundred linear foot road. Um. Which half of which would be through an existing fifty foot wide easement, um which starts at the uh. Northwest corner of the lot up here by Larkin Road. Um, and then comes down to where the lot is accessed um down here. Um, where then there'd be an additional uh roughly six hundred and ninety six feet. Um, ended by a um traditional cul-de-sac, um hundred forty foot. Um, outer diameter um cul-de-sac. Um. Uh, where am I? Let's see. Um. Right, and the the remaining, um, I suppose it's five hundred sixty four feet or so. Um, would run through a standard fifty three foot right away. Um. What's shown here, uh, we understand uh. The the um. Maximum length allowed for cul-de-sacs is five hundred feet. Um, it would be our. Um, initial intent or our initial intent was to meet the five hundred maximum foot uh requirement, starting from. The end of the easement where the lot is accessed. Let me zoom in here to sort of show you. Which would be. Right in this area here. Um, so from this point. Through to the end of the cul-de-sac, our intent is to to hold five hundred feet. Um, in this case, we we do show it uh a little bit longer. We show it at roughly five hundred and sixty four feet. Um, the reasoning is for that um was due to um. Um, where we're able to achieve a adequate soil testing uh for septic systems. Um, but we'd certainly be willing to revisit um the roadway at exactly five hundred feet or less. Um, to make that work. Um. Uh, we also understand uh the plan as you see it here. Um, a little bit. Um, would require waivers, um one of which would be. Um, a waiver for the right of way width through the existing fifty foot wide easement here. Um. Another would be a waiver to the overall roadway length or yeah, roadway length. Um, as we'd be over the um five hundred foot maximum requirement, if you want to include the. Um, roadway through the existing easement here. Um. I suppose those would be the two um. Main points of discussion for tonight and certainly of the feedback we'd like to. Um, hear from the board. Um, however, I would like to present um an alternative plan. Um, before we open up that discussion. Um. Let me. He is. So I believe this is what was submitted um to Martha. Um, and actually I have the same plan here. Um, just with a rendering, it's a little bit easier to follow so everyone can sort of get an idea of what's going on here. Um. So what's shown here i- is an uh open space residential development. Uh, the roadway would be exactly the same, the same length, um same uh diameter of the cul-de-sac. Um. However, the the difference in this case is roughly nineteen and a half acres um shown in this. Sort of highlighted transparent area. Um, would be granted to the town as open space. Um, that's approximately seventy three point eight percent of the lot. Um. Which puts us at twenty three point twenty three point eight percent over the required uh fifty percent. Um, needed um to provide it open space to the town, um which is why I'll notice um. Isn't it again? On this concept, we actually have uh seven lots, whereas the uh definitive yield plan we are showing um five. Um, the additional two were achieved um with the twenty percent uh density bonus. Um, and in this concept, all the lots would be connected uh to a common septic, which would be located right here in this area. Um. Right next to lot one. Um, one thing the uh. Uh applicant would also be interested in doing is, as you can see right below the uh. Um, common septic area here, there's there's a small parking area with ten parking spots. Um, and that would be uh a parking area dedicated to the public. Um. Uh, for use of the open space area out back here. Um, in addition, um, they would be, or we'd like to propose to. Build um a small uh pedestrian boardwalk, if you will, in the beginning of a. A trail to access the the space out back. Um. We do understand uh the need for a waiver free yield plan um in order to make this happen. Um, another reason why we'd love to get some feedback from the board on this. Um. But overall, I think this is sort of the um. The preferred option for the applicant. Um, and I did also just like to point out, I in my opinion, it offers the uh the most opportunity for collaboration with the town. Um. You know, if this is something uh the board would consider, uh. We'd certainly like to uh move forward with a full design. I know, you know, these plans are lacking quite a bit of detail. Um, but it's certainly something we would dive into if it was um the feedback. Um, we received tonight was positive. Um. Let me just check through my notes here. I believe that's it. Um, at this point, I I unless um. Uh, Mike or Chris had something to add, I'd like to open up for a discussion.
If I might real quick, I think the only thing that I would like to add is. You know, Chris and I are kind of excited about the opportunity working with the town on this project, the way it is drawn here. You know, we when we looked at this originally, you know, a house with a six acre lot um doesn't really do anybody any good. It certainly doesn't do the town any good. And once there's a six acre lot made and someone moves into that house, that land is gone forever. As Sam pointed out. It's beautiful back there. I mean, it, you know, most of this property is on the Parker River. We obviously can't build on the Parker River. Um, so. We might as well let the town uh and the people, the kids uh enjoy the property. So that's really how we like to approach this.
Okay, um, anything else like to add?
Chris, anything on your end?
Uh, no, not my end, other than the fact that, you know, haven't kind of gone through this in the past. It's. I. I I don't see a reason to be greedy and and. Yeah, and I I think it's a true collaboration with the town where, you know, there's a. There's a lot of upside for for everybody here, quite honestly. That's that's, I guess, kind of the point of of which we would like to kind of. Direct our our initiative at and from is is. Kind of share the wealth here of a beautiful property that is, it really is. I mean, the the south end of that is is gorgeous and. You know what? If everyone can use it, then better for everybody. And and instead of two or three people being able to access the river, now the entire town can, or quite honestly, anybody could.
Well, you know, with without. Commenting on on the merits of what you're proposing, um and and I and I hear you. The problem is essentially a legal one. I mean, for an OSRD. It's always been this board's interpretation of the bylaw that you require you're required to start. With uh an as of right yield plan and you just don't have that. So I don't I don't know how you can then go forward to an OSRD. But let me open it up to the other board members, see if there's any discussion. Pete, do you have any any thoughts on that?
Um, Larry, I'm with you. I conceptually I love it, but it's kind of a nonstarter because it doesn't meet the criteria. Of um uh way for free. Um, and you you articulated that in the presentation and that that is a that's a hurdle.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, unfortunately.
Yeah, I mean, I I it is. I'm sure I haven't been out there, but I'm sure it's a beautiful piece of land. Be wonderful to have it open to the public, but I just don't know that. We have the vehicle to do that. Uh, George, any thoughts?
Yeah, I agree with I agree with you, Larry, and with Peter. There's a lot of work to get around that. I don't think you can.
Yeah, not and certainly not in terms of an OSRD. I mean, you could, I suppose. If you wanted to proceed with a conventional subdivision plan, you could still offer to set some uh some uh. You know, space aside for the public, but um. You know, you've got a you've got a big ask to to essentially double the length of the cul-de-sac.
Right.
You know, but Leslie, any thoughts?
No, I actually agree with all of that. I don't understand with the OSRD. Um, if that if it's uh complete. Uh, public. Then, you know, the access to the backland. Um, going through other properties. I don't know how that would work unless it was figured into a a different style of a subdivision.
Yeah, uh, Woody, any any thoughts?
I agree with what's been said and I I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Uh, I don't know if Mary's still with us. I I think she may have uh dropped off. Uh, Martha or uh. Do you have anything to add?
Not really. I've I've been out to the site. I've actually walked it. Um, and it is a beautiful piece of property. I agree conceptually. It would be. Actually wonderful to be able to have public access to that property, but. We. Well, as you said, the board's position has been that the basis of an OSRD has to be a way for free. And that's not here. If there was some other way to to do this so that there could be public access. For the conventional subdivision, that would that could be a great solution.
I mean, if it went into like um. Uh, a private way and they or they. But I don't see it as an OSRD subdivision that can give access to pub to the rest of the public land.
No, no. So. I mean, I I think what I'm hearing from the board is we we like your intent, but we just don't see.
Love it.
How we can do it.
Is it? Can I ask you a question? Is it? Is it a matter of how the the rule was written? Because it. It seems like it would be a greater benefit to the town. A- and quite honestly, to the entire property, if it were able to be condensed lots and a gift to the town. Uh, in the majority, as opposed to trying to build these massive lots or or attempting to get it as a private way and. And having nobody be able to benefit from it. I don't. I guess what I'm. I think the part that I. I don't understand is that it it. We don't want to be greedy. We don't. We're not looking to make these massive estate lots and. It would be wonderful in a sense that people could enjoy the area as opposed to possibly no one ever enjoying it. And. I don't know how concrete those the bylaws are, and I I I'm novice to this. We are not developers in any way. We're. We're more just guys that are had an opportunity to do something and probably speaking more naivete than not, but. I don't know how concrete the laws are, and it sounds to me that it's almost dead on arrival based on what you're saying.
Yeah, I don't. I don't think. Yeah, I don't I don't think anyone disagrees with your point, you know? Uh, it's just we're constrained by what's in the bylaw. And with an OSRD, of course, it it offers a developer the opportunity to to get bonus lots if they. You know, um, uh, preserve some land for the public, or at least as as open space, and there are other vehicles too. But the problem is you have to start with what you can do as of right. That's what the bylaw requires. And you can't do anything out there as of right, in in the sense that you wouldn't need. A waiver of something at the very minimum, you're gonna need a waiver of the cul-de-sac length from five hundred to. What it was a twelve hundred feet, which is a lot. But even assuming you could get that, that would only get you a conventional subdivision plan. And you're still gonna have to meet the minimum frontage, minimum lots.
Which I believe was five if we on the original.
Yeah, that's correct.
Right, and that's assuming you get the waivers.
Uh, right, exactly.
You know? So that that's your problem. Uh, uh, once again, I I I don't think anybody's quarreling with. With with your intent, it's just the the law is the law, you know, we're we're bound by it.
So man, that's a question. Um, from from the town's perspective, uh, the. Is the roadway length? Um, is that a safety concern with fire?
Among other things, sure.
Okay.
Yeah. But but again, the the problem is that it's a waiver, and waivers can be granted. We have the authority to grant a waiver. But that still doesn't. Get you to the next step of an OSRD.
Well, I hear you. I hear you. I'm just thinking if if.
I wish I wish we could, honestly.
Yeah, I'm just thinking if we were to try to um go the uh conventional route here.
Uh, that would be your only option I that I can see uh would be to go for with a conventional subdivision and and request waivers. You've been. Listening all night to discussions about waivers, so you know, have a sense of what it's all about.
But. Larry, can I throw something in here?
Sure.
And if you were going to go with a conventional subdivision, I would do handstands if you were considered multifamily. Cause our community needs multifamily housing. You know, we we nobody will build it. You know, if you guys want you you guys want to think outside the box, man, I would wrap my arms around.
Yeah, I mean, maybe even the, you know, a condominium or something like that might might get you some relief from uh some of the required waivers for uh. I'm I'm not I'm not suggesting a single building, but I mean, a common condominium-style ownership or something like that.
But you know it is. Does that does that mean uh an over fifty-five scenario or?
Well, I don't think we're. I don't think that's what Pete was suggesting.
No, no.
More affordable, but.
Yeah, I mean, so here's the here's the thing, Chris. This town needs affordable housing. There is no affordable housing. I mean, if 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 I could clip my heels in every time we we approve something, we got two units or three units of affordable housing dynamite. The next step is multifamily housing, and that's, you know, something that, you know, we're looking in because of. We're an MBTA community that's going to need to have multifamily housing zone. That provides another avenue for people that are starting off the journey of of. Homeownership to have an avenue to get to the next step. Because we can't, we we have such difficulty encouraging young growth in our community. Because we have these large lots with large homes that people starting off can't do it. And our, you know, our community's aging, and so, you know, we look at these numbers. And it's like, okay, what, you know, where can we go with this? And so. It's very rare. Can we take down the uh the image for a second?
Yes.
Cause this is a great opportunity to have a conversation just face to face. I it's it's I I welcome the opportunity to to speak with people that would. Want to do some sort of a project that aren't just in for for the money, that want to work with the community. And we don't get that often, you know, you know, because usually developers are developers. They just want. You know, uh, do their thing. You're hearing from our heart and soul, everybody on this board, you know, would embrace something like that.
And and we're talking affordable housing. We're not talking about low-income housing. We're talking about. Enabling um a younger group of people that are just starting out in the journey of homeownership and life. To be able to buy into a community. Just like what we have. And um, that's in it, and it also offers the ability for. Young people that grew up in this community and realize that perhaps. That some of the uh housing is not affordable to them, but they want to remain in the community. And they want to um look into the future and and they'll grow, and then that. Housing will still be available to the next generation that will come up behind them.
So. Could I ask? I'm sorry, could I ask you a question? In terms of an affordable housing, what does the density look like in something like that? Would I and just I I just have no idea.
So my suggestion is have an offline conversation with Martha. Let her start to do the, uh, you know, the the knowledge basis that might help you guys to say, hey, is this an option for us? Is this something that might work? She's a valuable resource, and you know, there's a couple. New creative things that might might work for you guys, and so um I'm Martha, I know you'd be willing to have that conversation, right?
Yeah, and I I know on our end and 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 um. I think I can speak for Chris, you know, we would be very open to. Doing something that the town needs and 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 working with the town. We're not looking to come in bulldoze down all the trees. And uh and 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 put up a forty B. Uh, that's not us. Chris and I, we build. Um, high-end homes for high-end additions. Um, and we always try and tastefully fit them into. The neighborhood or the architects that we work with rather try and tastefully fit them in. To the neighborhoods and 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 fit the people's lifestyle. We just build them, but we've always taken an approach. Uh, where we try and pull in the same direction with everybody that we're working with, and it's served us very well. We've been in business for twenty-two years. Um, and I'd like this, like Chris said, this is our first subdivision. And we would like to pull in the same direction with the people that live in the town where this is going to be, so that's very important to us, so. Uh, you know, we would love the opportunity to talk with Martha further.
Great. I I I welcome that, and I thank you very much for the opportunity to have this conversation.
Yeah, well, thank you.
I think Leslie makes a very important point, which is affordable housing. And low-income housing are very different.
Yes, understood.
So, just to keep that in mind, um. I I think Pete is hoping that we can get some affordable housing here in New York, more of it.
Yes, I'm envisioning that uh townhomes, that type of a of a structure. Right?
Hey, great, thank you, Michael.
Okay, thank you very much, Leslie.
Okay, can we move on? I know it's late, folks, but can we just motor through the balance of this? Okay, that that brings us to the planning directors' report.
Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
We'll see you tomorrow, Martha.
Thank you, Chris.
Not too early.
Um, planning directors' report, I'll keep it short. Um, mostly, just to to provide a little bit more of an update on the master plan. Um, I sent you all out a copy of the working draft. And um.
All ninety-three pages.
Yeah. Two hundred plus, two hundred and ninety-three pages.
Two hundred and ninety-three pages.
Well, it's a it was a tone, but there's there's a lot that's gone into it. Um. And it's based on all the work that had been done before, um, a focus groups and survey and and all of that stuff. But um, we have the advantage now of planning efforts that have been done since then, like the municipal zone, his lights keep going out. Um, municipal vulnerability planning and. The the housing production plan, which was being completed as we're. Going through this process, um. And other things, so there's a lot of information in there, um, even if you can only get through. Now, the goals and objectives and the and the vision statement, that would be that would be great. Um, for now, but the uh the goal is to um basically announce it at a town meeting, um, have a. Have a final draft for public review ready by um May fourth. And get that up on the website, get some hard copies out in various parts of town for people to review. Put a survey out at the same time. Um, have a public uh forum on May fifteenth of the library. And then pulled together, um, I think the survey would close around um. Memorial Day that weekend, and then. Pull together those those comments, which um. Will be put in an appendix, which will then also. Provide path forward. So that's the that's the the plan right now. Emily, um, I believe will be available to talk about this in more detail at our major meeting.
Okay, thank you, Martha.
You're welcome. Yeah, I think I think for tonight, that's it.
Okay. Uh, liaison reports, select board, Leslie.
Wow, there's been so many. Um. Uh, the first was. Basic uh new and renewal licenses. Uh, town hall discussion, uh warrant discussion, uh and town meeting. Uh, updates and how to uh. There's a few changes that are going on for the the town meeting as far as your checking is concerned. Um, and just check out the website as far as, you know, to to understand it better. And um, then the um shared meetings with the the planning board, the FINCOM. Um, the municipal building committee and the select board to review. Uh, the plans for um. The uh town hall, uh, which. Uh, is proposed to be located on the corner of Morgan and High. High Road. And uh, that's about it.
All right, thanks, Leslie. Uh, ZBA has the regular monthly meeting tomorrow night. They have two new public hearings. Uh, one seventy-seven Middle Road uh for to convert um a a detached. Accessory apartment. Then two twenty-nine High Road. Um, to modify the structure by adding a uh and and attached. Uh, apartment, and that's it for the ZBA. Conservation?
Conservation met last night, and the two things that were re- relevance are relevance, excuse me. Uh, we spoke uh tonight, uh one seventy and governors.
Thank you, Pete. Martha, anything from MVPC?
Uh, a couple of things, yeah, commissioners' meeting, uh, my commissioners' meeting is tomorrow. Uh, planners' meeting is next week. Um, there are some initiatives which we've mentioned before that are going. Ongoing now, the um update of the housing production plan and the um. We has our mitigation plan. Uh, Kristen and I are going to be meeting with um. Couple of people tomorrow to talk about multifamily. MBTA communities of technical assistance. And Kristen has also been attending some community and economic development strategy meetings.
Uh, just really briefly on that, um, the regional community economic development strategy plan. Um, is there's a final draft form um that the process has been going on for the past. Fiscal year. Um, I've attended two meetings since starting in February, so. I'll send around the link to that um economic development draft plan. They're starting to. Send out social media posts asking for public comment, so there's a way to provide public comment to that plan back to. Um, the planning commission. And there will be public meetings later this month.
Thank you, Kristen. Okay, uh, can we move on then? Planning board meeting minutes. Uh, we have quite a few. Has everyone had an opportunity to review these?
No.
You have not.
No. No, I heard a couple of no's. Um, what's what's the board's pleasure? We want to um. Well, who who's who's feels comfortable voting on these? I see it raised hands. No, Pete, are you comfortable going forward?
I am, but I'm not, I don't think most board members are, so I would suggest that you kind of.
Well, we we have one of two options then. We can put these off to the next meeting. Or if the board is inclined, you can authorize me to review and approve them. What's your pleasure?
I would make such a a recommendation.
Yes, to permit the chair to review and approve the meeting minutes.
Yes, 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 yes.
Yes, all right, I.
Every meet, every meeting that you can approve has been provided to us, right?
What's that, Woody?
Every meeting on this list here has been provided to us, right? Yep, then I approved that.
All right, so so the motion brought by Pete, and I believe seconded by George, was to allow me to review and to. Approve or modify as necessary these meeting minutes. Any discussion hearing on Pete, how do you vote?
Yes, sir.
George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Um, Mary, you're in accord?
Yes, thank you, Larry.
Okay, and I vote.
Very much, Larry.
I vote yes as well, so I'll get that information out to you tomorrow, Martha and Kristen. I've been through them. Okay, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. So, all right, Leslie, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, George. Uh, no discussion. Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, good night?
Yes, sir.
I vote yes as well. Thank you all, and. At nine fifty-five PM, thanks.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.